... directs to CSSR State Philharmonic.
And we'd like to welcome everyone to the Planning Commission Tree Advisory Board Landscaping Awards for Excellence in Landscaping. This is something that's done every October as part of Community Planning Month where we try to recognize awards for excellence in landscaping that have made an impact on the visual environment of the community. And we have with us today Steve Blue, the City Forester, you may not recognize because he's wearing a suit. And we also have Kathleen Pearson from the Tree Advisory Board. The first project and the project that was nominated by the Tree Advisory Board for Golden Leaf Award is the Donna Alvinir Children's Center. And we want to give recognition certainly to the Salina Regional Health Foundation and Tom Martin, who is the spearheaded that project. Warren Edgar was the architect and designer of the area and also Wes McKee, who was instrumental in the design and installation of the actual planting plan. And this area actually dates back to the early 1900s and the St. John's Hospital that was built across the street in 1913. And historically, this area was an area of small, single-family homes. And then 1977, the Johnstown Towers were constructed. And then this area over here, a number of homes were removed, a parking lot was constructed. And then in 1998, Salina Regional Health Center took a building that was at Fifth and South and moved it over here and it was used as a childcare center for the Asbury Salina Regional Health Center. The Salina Regional Health Foundation successfully raised $6 million to construct a new children's center and with a lead gift from Jack and Donna Alvinir and also a grant from the Maybee Foundation. It's intended to serve as a home to three children's programs, the Infant Child Development Program, the Child Advocacy and Parenting Services, and the Salina Childcare Association. In 2010, in the fall, the Planning Commission reviewed plans submitted by Mr. Edgar for a approval of a planned development district and preliminary development plan for the children's center. That was approved by the Planning Commission and City Commission and construction on this 27,000 square foot facility began in December 2010. The site is 2.95 acres. It's bordered by Ash and Oakdale and on the south by Johnstown. As you can see, it's an L-shaped building. It's oriented both towards Ash and Oakdale. It's got two twin stone identification signs at the two corners. And this project was nominated because the plan incorporated both shade and ornamental trees, attractive ornamental fencing. We've got playground equipment in the southeast corner enclosed by a wrought iron fence and limestone support posts. And the fence perimeter is accented by river rock and you've got flowering shrubs, local native grasses. And just it has overall improved the attractiveness of this corner greatly. And so, Mr. Edgar, the architect, was instrumental in the layout. And then Wes McKee and McKee &amp; Son Landscaping was the designer for the individual plantings. So first of all, we have the building itself, the various accent pieces and the landscaping, which is over and above the city's minimum requirements. I think everyone would agree it adds to the overall attractiveness of the site. And if we compare this to what was there before in terms of the parking lot and then the daycare center, I think we'd all agree that this is a dramatic improvement to that corner and to the Ash and Oakdale streetscapes. So with Steve Blue's assistance, we would like to present to Tom Martin, the Donna Alvinir on behalf of the children's center, the Golden Leaf Award, which goes to the outstanding project selected by the Tree Advisory Board. So Tom, if you'd like to come up? Our other awards for this project, one for the overall design, we'd like to present to Warren Edgar, the architect. If you'd like to come up, we'd present him with a plaque. And then if we have a representative of McKee &amp; Son Landscaping? Looks like we had lots of involvement. Our second nominated project, which falls in the category of new development, was the Longhorn Steakhouse located on South Ninth Street in front of the Coles Store. And that project started back in August in 2011 when an application for final site plan approval was filed to go to the Planning Commission. And the plan was to take about a two-acre site out in front of Coles along South Ninth Street and to construct a 6,200-square-foot restaurant, which has a dining area of 242 people. And the construction of that restaurant began November 2011. It was completed in May of 2012. And Oakview Construction out of Omaha, Nebraska was the lead contractor. The building measures 86 by 76 feet. It is oriented to face Ninth Street and it has a rear area facing Planet. But really, if you drive around, it is attractive on all four sides, which is important when you are surrounded by streets as this site is. And the rear service area is screened from Planet Avenue. The Ninth Street facade has an arched false front over a covered entryway, which makes it clear where the entrance is. We've got windows on the north, south, and east facades of the building. We have pumpkin-colored drive-it stucco for the exterior and some contrasting stonework there over the entrance. There's 117 paved parking stalls in this development. There's a total of 18 tree units, including 155 shrubs. We appreciate the designers and the contractor working with us. We sometimes run into conflicts along South Ninth Street where we have overhead wires and in some cases, a designer will identify a shade tree and then will determine that that would grow up into the wire. So they worked with us to substitute in more low-growing trees along Ninth Street that will still grow to be attractive but not grow up into the overhead wires. And some things that are notable is this has 12-foot-wide buffer strip along South Ninth that's 300 feet long. There's over 155 shrubs planted on the site and it does make for an attractive gateway from Ninth Street into the Coles Development. So the individuals we'd like to recognize, I believe the store restaurant manager may be here, Mr. Deckert. And we'll let him accept on behalf of Darden Restaurants. This is Steve Deckert, the restaurant manager. And then Olson Associates was the overall site designer and we'd like to recognize them. And then we have Oakview Construction, who could not be present, but they did send us a note from Omaha, Nebraska, and they wanted to report that they're honored to be a recipient of the Award for Excellence in Landscaping for Longhorn Steakhouse. They take pride in every project they build and it's wonderful to receive recognition for that effort. The construction process is definitely a team process. It starts with an owner's vision. It's more narrowly defined by an architect and completed by the construction crew with the guidance of city partners along the way. They're disappointed they can't attend in person, but they want to express their thanks for the honor and they hope to work again in Salina. So we will make sure that they get this plaque in Omaha. And that is going to conclude our landscape awards for 2013 and we'll convene for regular business.
Perfect. Thank you, Dean. On behalf of the Planning Commission, thank you already for attending. Congratulations on your awards. And if you want to stick around for other business, you can. If not, we understand that you'd like to leave. We truly understand that. Thank you for coming.
Anyone keep you in shackles or anything?
We'll move forward with approval of summary minutes for the September 17, 2013 regular meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I would move we approve the minutes as presented. Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor in the capitol saying aye.
Aye.
All the same side. Passes. Going to public hearing items, number three on application Z-13-9. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do want to emphasize that this is a public hearing and that public input is welcome and encouraged. And the subject of this public hearing is a possible text amendment, which would eliminate the existing paving exemptions that we have in the zoning ordinance related to the paving of parking and driving areas. And the only exemption that it would maintain would be an exemption for residential dwellings that have access to either unpaved streets or alleys. So are we close to being able to gear up here, John? So I think what we would like to show first is that we've had much discussion on this item. It was an item of note in the deliberations and public process that resulted in the adoption of a new comprehensive plan. And one of the identified goals was upgrading development standards in the city's industrial areas and gateway areas. And so consistent with that goal and also consistent with a comprehensive review of our current requirements and also a pretty thorough review of surfacing requirements in other Kansas communities, the Planning Commission has initiated an application to amend the surfacing requirements. So just to summarize, the exemptions that we have in place today is that residential driveways are not required to be paved today. Paving is optional. Parking lots in residential zoning districts containing six or fewer spaces, so if I had a single-family dwelling, a duplex, or a triplex, those parking areas could be gravel today. Uses that are permitted in agricultural zoned areas within the community are exempt from having to have paved parking. And then the biggest exemption is permitted uses in the I-2 and I-3 zoned areas. And so the proposal initiated by the Planning Commission would eliminate these paving exemptions but retain an exemption for driveways connected to unpaved streets and alleys. And you also proposed that on properties that have gravel parking today, that if there was a project undertaken that would increase the assessed valuation by 30% or increase the building area by 50%, that would trigger a requirement that the entire parking area be paved. As this stands, the all parking areas that are existence on the effective date of any ordinance change would continue to be grandfathered in. And so we don't know what the eventual effective date might be or whether there will be one, but there will be a date established and all gravel areas legally in place on that date would be grandfathered in and then this would apply prospectively. So this draft that we are discussing is the starting point. And considering changes to the draft is intended to be a public process involving public input, the City Commission will ultimately decide what the city's paving standard should be, but that will be based on your recommendations and also on input from property owners and business owners. And we've cited for you in the report some of the things that come from the city of Salina's shared vision statement and also from the strategic plan. And one of those is to determine the most effective zoning and other land use tools to encourage and support desired mixed-use development and also to revise existing ordinances to accommodate growth and development objectives. And one of the growth and development objectives is to improve the overall appearance of the community. And in the comprehensive plan, it encourages us to create site design and development standards that promote quality development and design for new uses located in employment hubs. And employment hubs are primarily industrial zoned areas. So John, I'm going to see if you could go to the zoning map that we have in there and maybe display that and then we could zoom in. I think although we're discussing other current exemptions, I think the exemptions that apply to I-2 and I-3 zoned areas would have the biggest geographic impact. So I'm going to see if John can zoom this up a little bit. But you can see that north of downtown, along the Union Pacific Railroad and extending basically from east of Ohio all the way across the city, is an extensive area of I-2 and I-3 zoning. And then, John, if you want to scroll up, we'll look at the airport industrial area or feet. And so we have, starting down here at Waterwell Road and all the way up to almost Cloud Street, we have a pocket of I-2, I-3, and some I-1 zoning. And then the airport site itself is actually zoned A1 agricultural. And so in terms of talking about the exemption related to I-2 and I-3 zoned areas, it primarily is being exercised in this area here and then up north of downtown where we have a large band of I-2 and I-3 zoning. So John, I'm going to ask you to go to the draft amendment, just so we can walk through So this is based in a large part on the existing ordinance in terms of its location and format and all those things. The general requirement reads this way today that all open off-street parking spaces, access drives, and aisles have to be paved with asphalt or concrete. And then it does provide if somebody wanted to come to the engineering department or to Mr. Nelson or Mr. Stack and say, "We have this alternative method of paving, whether it's pervious or porous concrete," or it might be a form of brick pavers or grass pavers or other things, and they can show that it would have the same structural abilities to support vehicles, including fire apparatus or trucks or things like that. That could be proposed and submitted to our engineering department for review, but otherwise all parking areas would have to be paved with asphalt and concrete. And then we would plug in whatever the date would be, if you want to go ahead and scroll up, John. It's basically the unpaid parking improvements in existence on the date of whatever the effective date of the ordinance would be and maintained without interruption as parking areas shall not be required to comply with the paving standard. So that is basically a grandfathering provision. And then the exception to that would be if I had a property and it had an existing gravel parking area and there was a building renovation that increased the appraised value of that building by more than 50%, then all the parking improvements on the property would have to be paved. And the same thing would apply in item two there, except that would apply to an increase in floor area. And those percentages are simply based on what we have in the landscaping ordinance in terms of retrofitting property. Example I would give would be what was formerly the SRS office at the corner of Belmont and Ohio. And they abandoned that location. It was purchased by Bennington State Bank. They made improved, they didn't add on to the building, but they made improvements that exceeded 50% of the appraised value of that building. And so they went in and had to meet the landscaping requirements. And so that site looks a lot different today with the addition of landscaping than it did when it was the SRS offices, and that's because of the 50% increase in value. So since that was a benchmark that was already established in the community and has been in use since the early 1990s, it seemed like that might be one that would be understood and seen as defensible. But again, those percentages could be altered in any way that you would see fit. But basically, if one of those two things happened, then that existing gravel parking lot would have to be converted to a paved lot. Then indeed, we have the exception that says if I have a home on Woodland or Prospect or one of our gravel streets, or if I'm constructing a rear garage or carport and my access is from an unpaved alley, it's not really fair to expect the property owner to pave their driveway if how they get there is on an unpaved street or unpaved alley. So that exemption is there. As it is drafted today, it says residential dwellings, so it would not necessarily apply to businesses. The other thing that you will see around the community is that you will see some locations that have gravel parking lots, but they will have a paved handicapped accessible space in the middle of a gravel parking lot. And so even though there might be exemptions that allow gravel today, there is no exemption that your handicapped accessible space must be paved. And you will occasionally see that, that there's a parking lot entirely gravel except for the accessible space. And then it just specifies that if you don't have paved parking, then you've got to have an acceptable surface of crushed rock or gravel and you have to keep it free of potholes, weeds, dust, trash, that even if you have a gravel parking lot, you need to maintain it in an appropriate manner. And it would allow, obviously, city staff to enforce that. John, if you could go to options for adding to or modifying the draft text amendment language? And these are not exhaustive by any means, but I would just point out to you today, and it's not by this ordinance section, but by an administrative interpretation made by the zoning administrator, that the paving requirement also applies to vehicle display areas. And so that would, whether you're Marshall Motors or Long MacArthur Ford or Sankey Auto Center, that not only does the paved parking for employees and customers come into play, but the areas where you display cars or trucks or boats or manufactured homes have to be paved as well. One option in this ordinance would be to insert vehicle display areas along with parking areas and driving aisles to make it clear in the code that there's a requirement that vehicle display areas associated with dealerships must be paved today. It's a requirement, but it's done by an administrative interpretation and not per se in the code. The other we have found is in some communities that don't have many exemptions for paved parking. This language that you have in item two there, that comes from the City of Manhattan's ordinance, and they require paved parking in all zoning districts, but they have a provision that says that areas used for the storage of equipment or service vehicles used in connection with the operation of a business located on the premises may be surfaced with gravel or asphalt millings, which is maintained to eliminate blowing dust and erosion. And we have essentially by written administration of the zoning ordinance from the previous zoning administrator have applied that throughout the community. And so an example of that would be something that the Planning Commission, City Commission recently approved, which is a storage area north of Waters True Value Hardware, which is not a parking area or part of their parking and circulation, and it was allowed to be surfaced with gravel. There's an area at Bangston Tire Center on North Santa Fe. It is part of a C-5 district. The front portion where customers and employees parked is paved. They have a fenced-in area in the rear where they store tires. They have vehicles awaiting repair and other items, and that was allowed to be gravel because it's not part of their parking and driving areas. A third example would be the Eldorado Bus Company on Wall Street. They have a paved parking for all their employees and customers in front along Wall Street. They have a large area behind the main plant building where they store chassis and buses waiting to be equipped. That is surfaced entirely with gravel. So in the draft that you have in front of you today, this language is not in there. But we think if we're going to be administering this, it would be better to address it in the ordinance than the current reliance on administrative interpretation. And the opposite of that would be to clarify and say that it would be your expectation that areas used for storage of equipment or service vehicles used in connection be paved with asphalt or concrete. That would be a change from the current administrative interpretation, but we think that you should at least consider in constructing this ordinance, how you want to see storage areas dealt with. The other example I can come up with, it's where Calabrese Heating and Cooling is in Ponton Construction. Others, it's across from Western Extra Light on Armory Road. That was formerly part of a C-3 district, has three or four contractors, offices, and storage yards along the south side of Armory Road. The front portion of that, front yard landscaping was required, paved parking was required, but those contractors were allowed to have a fenced-in storage area in the rear that was gravel surfaced, even though it was zone C-3. So basically, if you look at two there and three, they are not currently present in the draft ordinance, but they would be polar opposites of each other. The first one would create or clarify that if all your paved parking for employees and customers is present, that you may create a fenced-in storage area that could be surfaced with gravel. be surfaced with gravel or asphalt millings. Or you could take the approach that that area needs to be paved also. A fourth option that has been discussed, and it's been proposed at least four times that I'm aware of and not adopted by any, either planning or city commission, is that you saw in the summary of the various requirements in other communities that some of them have a, a paving specification. And that, that was proposed, as I mentioned, on several occasions in the City of Salina and not ever adopted. Some examples of that is like Ottawa, Kansas has a requirement that it doesn't just say concrete or asphalt. It says four inches of reinforced Portland cement concrete or four inches of granular base with two inches of asphalt as designed by an engineer or accepted by the city engineer. So if you were interested in adopting a standard that was more than just asphalt or concrete, but actually specified thicknesses or subgrades, we could certainly do that. I think then we would be in a role where the planning commission would have to rely and city staff would have to rely on the engineering department, both to review those as part of the plans, to make recommendations, and also if you're going to have a standard, then you need to inspect for it. So when we go out and inspect parking lots today, we confirm that they are paved. We confirm that they are striped. They have all the proper dimensions, signage, all of that. We do not go out and measure paving thickness or specify a paving thickness. That is a potential item that you could recommend for adding or inserting. And then, John, if you could go to other options for triggers, we'll just go through there. We had talked, we had, you were comfortable with the 30 percent area and 50 percent of value, but these are other potential triggers that could trigger a paving requirement. Any change in the use of the building from the current use could be used as a trigger to trigger a paving requirement. The issuance of a building permit that involved physical improvements to the property, that could be used as a trigger for a paving requirement. You could lower the threshold from 50 percent increase in value to 25 percent increase in value. You could lower the percentage of increase in area that would trigger a paving requirement. You could set those percentages at whatever you feel is the appropriate level. You could have a trigger that says if anybody increases the number of parking spaces on their property above a certain percentage, let's say they, they added, had a 50 percent increase in parking spaces, that could be used as a trigger to go back and have them pave the remainder that might be gravel. Or instead of having a percentage, you could say that if there's any voluntary increase in the number of parking spaces, the entire area must be paved. And then, John, the, the other one I think I have up there was just the questions and answers. And these are, these are strictly hypothetical and they're not exhaustive by any means. But I think one of the most important things, just to think through about the implications is today I have a single car driveway and I have a single car garage on my property. If I want to add a wing onto my driveway today, I could go in and just put, if it's on my own property, I could just put a gravel wing on there to park my extra vehicle on or to park a camper or a boat and trailer on, and I could just have a gravel wing on my paved driveway. Under this ordinance, as it is proposed and constructed, any wing that you would put on your driveway would have to be paved. So that, that's an important thing to understand. If I go out and buy a commercial industrial building and has a gravel parking lot and I, I move in there, it's been vacant, do I have to pave the lot? Well, the answer is no. But if I did something on the property that increased the size of the building by 30 percent or did work that increased the value by more than 50 percent, then the existing gravel lot would have to be upgraded and paved. So it's not just the, as proposed, it's not just the change in use or taking a vacant building and putting an occupant in there. There would have to be an increase in value or an increase in space. And then it, it wouldn't necessarily be a church. It could be any use in any district that currently requires paving. But we've had this question before and it really hasn't changed. But we have, we have a number of schools. We have churches. We have parks, some of which had, had pre-existing gravel parking areas. And sometimes there's a desire to expand those. And ever since 1989, if you're in an area that requires paving, you cannot expand an existing gravel parking lot. So neither under the current ordinance nor under the proposed ordinance would anybody be able to expand a gravel parking lot. Today, if I was in I-2 or I-3 zoned area and I have a gravel lot, I could expand it. But under this ordinance, the gravel area that's there is grandfathered, but it could not be expanded if this change was adopted. And we want to make clear that we're also not just talking about the parking area itself, but all the driving aisles and everything that provides circulation and access through the site. Again, not necessarily storage areas, which we think could be defined separately. And so that's, that's where the last question comes in that you would need to make a recommendation on is that I'm in an I-2 or I-3 area. This change is made. I understand that I have to pave my customer and employee parking area, but can I establish an area on my property and fence it in and use it for storage of equipment or merchandise or things like that? And is it separated from the employee and customer parking area? That's something that you need to decide. Should storage areas be defined and accepted out? Or should they be required to be paved, just like the parking and maneuvering areas? So I'm going to close my remarks there. I have provided you with the background. At one brief period of time, which didn't last long, there was a period where all parking areas in Salina had to be paved. The problem was that that ordinance was passed with very little public knowledge or input. And when people discovered after the fact that it had been passed, there was a great deal of, of public concern and objection to it. And it was modified by the planning commission, city commission. The goal here is to try to be as upfront as possible, to encourage as much public input as possible before the planning commission makes a recommendation that would go on to the city commission. So the purpose of today's meeting is so staff can walk through the, the draft that the planning commission has initiated and then to allow members of the public to respond to that proposal. So I'll open it up to any questions that you have about my summary, but we certainly want to allow time for members of the public to ask questions or give their input.
Dean, thank you for the report. Are there any commissioners have any questions for Dean or city staff?
I'm afraid I do. I was wondering about temporary special events and grass parking. I know we just had, Long MacArthur just had an outdoor concert. We've had River Festival Expo Center events where we allowed temporary parking on grass. Is that covered under the present ordinance? Does it need to be covered? Is it under the proposal?
I might have to bring Mr. Scrag up here to clarify that, but it's my understanding that when the, the more bigger umbrella property maintenance code was adopted, that it allowed for the use of, of grass areas for special events, special community events that were, were of one time or, or you need that short duration? And so that discretion already exists. I don't, it hasn't come up in the, in the context of the Kansas Wesleyan discussions, but we, we pointed out there that both the City of Manhattan and the City of Lawrence have special exemptions for football Saturdays that allow people to park on grass when there are home football games and, and don't, don't do any enforcement of that. So the property maintenance code, as it relates to parking on surfaced areas, allows for an exemption for special events.
And do they apply for those permits?
Yes, there is a special event process. There's also, we have a temporary use permit where you might have a temporary use on a property that consists almost entirely of grass. And so we have had tents set up and different things like that on, on grassy lots, and we've addressed it because, that way because it's of one event and it's of a limited duration. And so there, there are, there are ways that allow that to be done through the special event permit or temporary use permit process that wouldn't necessarily have to be addressed in here. It's addressed in the property maintenance code.
Any other questions for Dean?
I, two, but they're together. Explain for me AG1 and its uses. What is, what are possible uses in AG1 zoning?
We do have some A1 zoning on East Cloud down towards the levee. We have some property down there that's still used for semi-agricultural purposes. We also have the, the airport runway, the, the East Crawford Recreation Area and the Salina Municipal Golf Course, I believe are zoned A1. And so a lot of our property that's A1 is, is either cemetery or park or it's unplatted ground that's used for some agricultural purpose. Or in the case of Salina Municipal Airport, all the runway areas are zoned A1. The non-runway areas are zoned industrial.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, remind that this is a public hearing and we'd open it up to the public at this time. Please, as a reminder for the clerk, keeping that if you didn't put your name and address for the record when you address the podium, and we'd open it up for any public comment or concerns or questions or anything about the draft.
You should have at your places some written comments prepared by Mr. Rogers of the Airport Authority. And we'll also have the ability to put that up on the screen at the time that he presents.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I am Tim Rogers, the Executive Director for the Salina Airport Authority, 3237 Arnold Avenue. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on proposed changes related to the City of Salina paving requirements you have before you, my written comments, and I will not read them word for word and save you from that, but they're, I'll refer to them here, refer to them here during my comments and hopefully a discussion, questions and answers that the commissioners may have. I do have, I'll break down the concerns from the Airport Authority standpoint and really the two categories that have been really discussed here this afternoon already. I-2, I-3 requirements and then the AG1 requirements. And the concerns that I'll express to you this afternoon and we can discuss would be the, any action unintended consequences that would limit the Airport Authority's role as a developer and, and a part of the comprehensive plan and our economic development goals and objectives for this community. Those unintended consequences of increased development costs, which really could really limit the ability of the Airport Authority to work with private sector companies to develop existing properties and, and complete, you know, and achieve the goals and objectives for economic development set out in the 2010 Comprehensive Annual Plan. The Comprehensive Plan does identify the airport, Airport Industrial Center as an employment area. And I've made those comments and references to the plan in my written remarks. And again, you can relate to the, refer to those and as you reflect on these comments. There is a specific project, though, that really is, can be used as an example in our discussion. And Mr. Andrew has really kind of laid out, you know, some of the consequences and some of the options you have in front of you that could really impact in a negative way a project that is, that is underway to develop, being developed by the Airport Authority. If we do go back to the Comprehensive Plan, there is a specific reference to the need to use our multimodal capability. In this case, I will highlight rail. On page two dash 68 of the 2010 Plan, it does add a goals and objectives out of the plan, C4 on that page, under rail, to create cargo rail systems that provide support for local business and have a positive impact on the community. C5 under that section talks, refers to the Salina Regional Airport now, to continue to develop the Salina Regional Airport as a regional, a regional employment center that supports aviation, education and industry through its transportation services. If you go to page two, two dash nine seven and two dash nine eight, we do talk about the, the plan talks about the airport employment, employment area. And, and I would highlight in this excerpt on this, the bottom of that page, the central location and multimodal nature of the airport should be maximized to attract and serve business and industry in the area. To achieve this plan or this, this goal and objective as outlined in the Comprehensive Plan, we have been working closely with the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce and Area Business and Industry. We've identified, has been identified through the Economic Development Steering Council, of which is composed of the city, the representatives of the city, the county, Airport Authority and Chamber, the need to develop some trans, railroad transload facilities. Seven South, South Industrial Area and Airport Industrial Center businesses have been identified as a need, identified the need to shift from bringing shipments and material in by truck to bring it in by rail. It has some great benefits for the state and for the community. If we get truck shipments down, get it onto rail, that really does help our roadway system too. But it helps in the cost efficiencies for our businesses and industry. They save on shipping costs and then they can expand a little bit more. They can, they can maintain the workforce. Maybe they can add workforce, but they are certainly remain competitive. The Airport Authority has operated rail industrial tracks for about forty-four, forty-five years since the creation of the Airport Authority, and we do have one existing rail spur left and remaining. To achieve this project, we have taken several steps to work towards improving or expanding an existing transload facility. Number one, we've compared the construction and looked, studied construction of transload facilities at other like and similar industrial centers across the nation. We have surveyed, you know, the requirements of the seven industries that identified a requirement for additional rail capacity or transload abilities. Big point, we have renewed our industrial track agreement with the Union Pacific Railroad. That is a renewed agreement, new agreement that provides for the continued use of the industrial rail spur for the coming years and sets the stage for an expansion. We've consulted with the Kansas Department of Transportation, their rail division. We have selected an engineer to design the transload expansion, but because of this action, this pending action, and you'll see I've had to put that design contract on hold till we understand what requirements would be made as far as paving within an I-2, I-3 area. We have developed a preliminary project, budget for this project of $250,000. And that is based upon a, a use of two points, over 2.5 acres for equipment staging and parking with millings, asphalt and concrete millings that we have on hand. And we have drafted the preliminary, preliminary- And we have drafted the preliminary, preliminary use agreement for the transload facility for these agreements. So John has up on the slide now, his timing is always great, the look at this facility as the preliminary design sets now. You can see at the bottom of the screen, the curvature of the right of way, that is the industrial lead track. To the north of this track, we already have one user using the three tanks you see to the north of the development site, United Suppliers is currently using and has been for a couple of over 15 years. The site has a transload facility for liquid nutrients, for fertilizer, for crop nutrients. We're a central, north central Kansas and this area distribution center for United Suppliers. The property you highlight, see highlighted to the south, to your left, would be the transload facility. You can see the improvements adjacent to the rail, be two loading docks on either side of the rail. And then you see the acreage, some two point, almost three acres to the, onto the west or to the top of the screen, that's the equipment storage area. If you use this as an example, if this was required to be paved, the cost of that paving would be $857,000, $850,302. That is based upon our current design, that is based upon a preliminary pricing estimate from local Slina paving contractors. So that is as recent as this past, last, at the end of last week. You can see that we already have a paved access road into the site off of Centennial Road, but everything you see highlighted and bold would be using millings to, for the surfacing for this area. We have determined that $250,000, this project is economical. With the advice of the design professional visiting with them, if it was a $1.1 million with the cost of additional paving thrown into the project, it's not economical. The economics do not, we cannot pass on, we can pass on the cost of $250,000 to the users and they can still receive net benefit related to their shipping costs, but we can't at $1.1. If I can switch them to the agricultural activity, the Airport Authority, the runways, taxiways, the airfield system is A1. That's some 2,000 acres of property. We do have much of that in ag production, but in that area too, we have a significant number of access roads, parking, you know, equipment staging areas for our tenant farmers, driveways that are gravel and a combination of paved driveways, but a lot of it is gravel or millings. The entire perimeter road is millings. If we were, had to go in and have a requirement to pave some of these areas, that would be a financial burden, economic burden that we are not prepared to meet and it has no, there's no development out there. The recommendation of the Airport Authority at this point in time is that we do not support the elimination of the I-2, I-3 paving exemption and elimination of the paving exemption for agricultural zone areas, which in this case, the airfield area. We've got a lot of pavement out there already to maintain and 12,300 feet of, 12,300 feet of runway. And so that's our focus on that area, on that project, on that area. We are open and to discussing and the discussion about how to modify and, you know, the ordinance. And I believe in the option that Mr. Andrew has pointed out, where we would not include a requirement to pave equipment and equipment storage areas is very important. And that's important for the existing businesses at the Airport, Airport Industrial Center. It's important for future development that we can still provide equipment storage areas, which is common at other industrial parks that are competing industrial parks. I was down in Wichita, Kansas last week and took a drive through, it's, you know, considered, what locally they call it, the airport industrial area to the east of Wichita Mid-Continents, Hoover Road, Triup is there and their, New Holland is in that area and a number of smaller businesses. And you are seeing the combination of paved access roads, paved parking, but the unpaved storage areas and overflow for equipment areas. And that's our competitor, that's one of our competitors out there in the, in the world of developing and attracting business and industry. With that, Mr. Chairman, be glad to answer any questions that you and the commission may have.
We have that exception language up on the screen there. Obviously, it's not written in stone by any means, but I get the gist from your comments that you would feel better about this if that was inserted in there. Is there anything in there in terms of the verbiage or terminology or things that you think are unclear or lacking? As I was reading through your comments and your description of the transload facility, it seemed like the way that that use was described, that that area could potentially fit into this exemption, but we would want to have you look at that and see if there's anything there that would give you more comfort in terms of making sure that the activities that you'd like to see exempted be exempted. And then I guess my, my follow-up question is, as we've been using you as a good example of industrial areas that do have paved parking, as I've tried to explain to the planning commission that projects like Slina Vortex and El Dorado and Ovation Cabinetry and FedEx, their parking is paved not because the zoning requires it, but because the Airport Authority requires it through deed covenants or lease agreements. So you're comfortable with that aspect of it, but you'd like to have better definition between parking areas and storage areas?
Well, I think very definite. I mean, that was the concern initially upon seeing this item coming onto your agenda would be an unintended consequence of having, on this one project as an example, a significant amount of dollars that would make the project uneconomical, that still applies to an industry too. I think the El Dorado National example is very, is a very good example too. El Dorado National, that project would be very difficult to, to have been difficult to compete for if they're almost, Dean, I think that's almost 20 acres of storage area in the, at the south side of their facility. That'd be very difficult. We, as a community, we competed for that project and other locations if that requirement had not been there. That project, that employer probably would not have stayed in, not only in Slina, Slina County, would not have stayed in Kansas. I think we've had good projects, I know we've had good projects and good project owners that have looked at their project and they naturally go to paving their parking and paving the driveway and, and working on their design. And I, but I think that concern is, again, another recent project is Universal Forest Products. Pave their driveway, pave their employee visitor parking, but their storage area is a combination of pavement, concrete and asphalt, but it's also, it's asphalt millings. But we went to the steps of, with developing that project with that tenant of screening that area also. So I think you have other project owners, building owners and developers that are trying to make the same steps, you know, in working with the industry. But I think the unintended consequence of requiring this equipment area being paved would be, would hinder development and hinder that work.
Dean, can we conveniently exempt the Airport Authority properties out of this? I mean, I think I, I feel that they have a special circumstance out there that's not the same as the rest of the community standards and they ought to be given the flexibility to negotiate their own deals, what they're doing now and for the benefit of the commercial enterprise that they seek out there.
Well, actually what we're proposing in a way of, as it is described for the employee customer parking areas, is that we're proposing that the bar or the standard that the Airport Authority has set in their I-2 and I-3 areas also extend to other I-2 and I-3 zoned areas. If, if Mr. Rogers concurs, I think the most important consideration is not the actual customer employee parking areas, but to look at this exemption here and to see the comfort level with that and if it is drafted and constructed appropriately to address those situations where some of the reasoning behind having paved parking is not present.
I think if I can address Mr. Andrew's question, seeing this for the first time today, I would just like to have time to review that and then we'll have a response back to you here very shortly, very quickly, but I'd like to kind of take that in and make sure I don't miss something before I comment something. But yes, it's, that's, that's the direction that I think, that from my standpoint in the Airport Authority Board that we would be looking toward.
Part of our purpose today is to have the planning commissioners look at that and to see if they think that is an important part or paragraph to insert into the ordinance.
Thank you. I don't want to have any unintended consequences either. I am curious about the tabulation for the paving that you submitted.
Yes.
What design specification were you using there that had 10 inches of base and 10 inches of concrete?
The weight bearing loads coming off of rail and going onto rail.
So how much, how much of that is going to have to occur if you use millings? Will you not, still need to have a 10 inch base of rock and do erosion control and so forth? I'm just looking at the total numbers here and it looked like to me that there's about $150,000 worth, even if you already have the millings on site before you have a parking area. Would that be fair to say?
It will be substantially more millings. We do, we do a treatment underneath the millings before we bring that area. We'd put a tensile barrier in there to carry the load and distribute loads. So we've done a preliminary design on that already. They're part of this, part of this equation why we can deliver this project with exceptionally low cost by using millings, is that the Airport Authority already has on hand sufficient millings from previous airfield overlay projects that we do not have to purchase. So there's no cost for the millings that we would use for the project, it's just the cost to haul.
And I anticipate that every person who has a little heartburn about this project is going to talk about the cost to them. And if I'm a homeowner down the block from where I live and I'm going to find out that I need to put an apron to park my son's car, that might only be six, $7,000. I would submit to you that that six or $7,000 has a greater impact on me perhaps than the company that you're describing at $850,000. So I want to be sure that the costs of meeting these requirements are really realistic and not maybe a little larger. And it sounds to me that maybe $857,000 might be a little on the tall side.
I disagree because that is the cost based upon contractor input to pave, to meet a specification of paving that area. I would disagree. That is the cost as compared to a total cost of $250,000.
Tim, I have a related question. Go ahead.
No, so, but I do, would disagree.
I have a related question germane to that fact. What you're talking about, I'm not disputing the costs, I'm assuming that people who lay paving are more reversed at that than I am, but you were talking about economic feasibility, which I think is what Commissioner Box is also raising. Over how many years has, was that economic feasibility spread?
You mean for the term?
Yeah, if it's economically feasible, you get benefit over years. For how many years was economic feasibility calculated?
For $250,000 investment?
$857,000, the total, the 1.1 million total.
Well, typically you, you would like to, in this case, it's going to be a use-based activity, but typically we like, not like to go out more than five years. This is not a, and we are not contemplating bonding this project. This project is intended to be a cash project, it's not intended to be a bonded project because we don't, do not have a lease agreement to go with this type of project. This is a use-by-use project with seven, five to seven users that would eventually sign up to use the project. So if we, if I forecast a recovery, cost recovery much greater than five years, that is, would not be, it's not a good project. We should have the revenue coming in so we can get a cost recovery at $250,000 within five years.
But you'd anticipate it lasting, I would think, longer than five years for the paving.
That's the other part of it, that's just another, another part of the question, the equation, but you know, in the development, you want to honestly get your cost recovery back.
Right.
So you're not extending out that cost, that, that project. It doesn't necessarily match the term or the life of the project. Then you need to start acquiring monies and funds to repair and maintain and handle the depreciation cost of the project.
Understandable. Quick question also, just a brief one, but I see that the reloading facility is described by you as a parking and staging area. Are you concerned about the definition of whether it is parking requiring paving or storage staging not requiring?
That is a discussion that Mr. Andrew and I had before your meeting is that, yes, the definition is, is very important. You know, what is the definition of parking versus, you know, equipment staging, equipment areas as he outlined in his summary brief? That's a very important distinction in your deliberation, your consideration of this, of this change.
So this is going to place a burden on administrative staff to determine whether that is indeed parking or, or storage slash staging, correct?
Well, hopefully we can get some good definitions in there and have it appropriately. I'm just going to paraphrase here from the staff report. It went to both the planning commission and city commission in regard to the Bankston Tire Center property, but it, our report says, one of the primary issues relating to this request is whether the area that they wish to use is a customer vehicle storage area or a parking lot. If it's a customer employee parking area, it must be paved with asphalt or concrete. If it's a fenced-in storage area for business vehicles and equipment, it may be gravel. And then we go on to say, based on the information we have from the applicant about how it will be used and all of those things, we have concluded that it is a, a customer vehicle storage area and an equipment storage area that would not have to be paved. But the ultimate judgment on that was left to the planning commission and, and city commission. So even, even if you have good definitions, yes, there will be some subjective judgment about that, but we, our focus is that in parking areas that are primarily used by customers and employees, there are frequent comings and goings of traffic in and out, whereas in a storage area, you may have a piece of equipment or even some service vehicle that may sit there a week at a time and not move. And so the, some of the objections to gravel parking is on the aesthetic side, but also dust generation and also the dragging of materials out into the street. And so over the years, we have tried to distinguish between areas of customer employee parking where you have frequent coming and going versus an area where pieces of equipment or things sit. So if you look at the area north of Waters True Value where they have the equipment rental, it's sitting most of the time. It's not a traffic area that where vehicles are coming and going all the time like you have in the parking lot in front of the store. So we would do our best with definitions to clarify that, but there, there are still going to be some closed cases where some administrative judgments can have to be used to say, is this a parking area or is it primarily a storage area? And I've just, in, in reading through the material and the description, I would be inclined to say that the area that was identified for the transload facility would probably fit within that definition of areas used for storage of equipment or service vehicles, but we would want to make sure that we had both this language and definitions that distinguish those to make everybody feel comfortable.
Well, I can see that also, but just for the purposes of a discussion, looking at what might be an issue down the, down the line, part of the reason for having parking paved is dust raised, being kicked up, and there's going to be a lot of movement on this location, which would suggest parking, paving would be a better way of handling that. I'm, I'm not saying that's the I'm, I'm not saying that's the interpretation. I'm just saying I'm looking at alternate ways that that could be looked at.
I would invite you to come out to look at some of the areas that we have done with asphalt millings. And once you put the millings down and you compact them, there is not the dust and, and activity that you're thinking of, that you have, have in mind. Even with a gravel parking area, you can do dust control. And so there are ways to do that for other developments and other users within the community, within the I-2, I-3 areas. And again, this is, again, you got to keep in mind, an area like this is not a, hopefully it's an everyday activity, but it's going to be used when shipments are received and when they are, then when they get received, materials received and once shipped out. But mostly it's inbound, so you have to pull the materials, the shipment off, store the material with their container, whether, you know, or offload it, and then hopefully it should move out fairly quickly. But you have to stage material coming, shipments coming in and then going out. So the examples, again, there's not a dust, there's not a dust, I've never heard of a dust complaint with Eldorado National. It's been in place for 10-plus years. The Kansas National Guard, the Regional Sustainability Maintenance Site off Airport Road, again, built that with millings and it's been a very stable material to use and not creating dust. Dust is a concern for an airport and aircraft operations, and so we've taken that into account. And I think that we have not seen that issue. There's more dust problems with Western Kansas coming our way than with our, our parking and storage areas.
Tim, this is a really quick, small question. I want to be sure I understood. Did I understand you correctly that you mentioned the 1.1 million dollar cost, which you've been, we've been talking about for the transload facility, but did I understand you correctly that another concern of yours is roads leading to that that might have to be paved as well on additional cost or not?
No, I think with this example we had, we already, we already have the access road, the driveway from Centennial to the site, it's already paved. And I think that's, you know, I think we understand, and I think Mr. Andrews brought up, there is a concern about, about going off of a gravel area and tracking, you know, to a, a public street. And so that this area is already paved because that was done as we developed the Builder's Choice site. Again, another example of a facility that is located to the south of this picture on there, to your left, that access road services Builder Choice, which parks their trucks and their, their ready-mix trucks on, on gravel and, and millings.
Commissioner Kenny, question?
Yeah, I, a point of clarification and then a question for Dean if you will. Tim, is, I understood you to say that you want to look closely at the language in addition number two of the options to be added to the text amendment, which we just talked about. Am I correct?
Yes.
And you sound like you might look at those somewhat with an objective views being helpful to your needs.
At the present time, yes, but I just want to make sure.
But you've got to, yeah, you've got to read them more closely. I understand.
I don't think very well on my feet, so.
Then, so I want to, then I want to transition to Dean and help me understand. It's, it's going to be very difficult in my opinion to address that exemption and then look at maybe some of our local auto dealers and the exemption they may request to have what I'd call non-customer use stored vehicles on their lot. Because that exemption at the airport could well be cars that come in on a train and then are, I mean, it probably won't be in our community, but it could be.
Well, I mean, there is an auto ramp that's, that's part of this and they would be parked in that, in that area.
So you could have autos stored there on non-paved area, and then if you required autos to be stored on a paved area at an auto dealership, there's a real conflict there. I'm just confused on that conflict.
Yes, we already, and we can give you examples because we have it in our North Ohio Overlay District that, that governs, it's an overlay district that covers from I-70 down to North Street. And in that overlay district, it requires merchandise display areas to be paved. It allows storage areas to be surfaced with, with asphalt millings or gravel. And again, the, where you're displaying merchandise for sale, that's usually in the front yard area between the building and the street, whereas most storage areas are in a side or a rear yard area. It's not the most prominent thing on the lot. And, and that's the examples that you would find with FedEx or El Dorado Bus out in the airport industrial area is that the front area is where you have your customer and employee parking and then the areas that might be surfaced with gravel or asphalt millings are in a rear area that might be fenced in storage. But I, I think that we can clearly distinguish between merchandise display areas and what we would consider storage areas.
Well, let me be specific then, so it can help me out. Conklin Cars has quite a few cars parked on grass near I-135 at times because they're more than they can get on their paved, what I would consider display. Although if you go into Conklin Cars to look for a car, you may be escorted back there to look at one of the new vehicles. Long MacArthur, on the north side of Long MacArthur recently had a lot of vehicles stored on grass and when it rained.
And those are all gone, if you'll notice.
They're, they're gone. But my question is, with this policy, if we look at these exceptions or these options to add, is that going to be able to be identified? What's, what's vehicle storage? It's really just gravel lot storage and what is vehicle storage for customer sales purposes?
I believe that we can distinguish between storage and display.
Okay.
What Conklin Cars has and what Long MacArthur had was vehicles that were on display for sale, for purchase, that were parked on unsurfaced areas. And so the ones at Long MacArthur, we requested that they be moved off of there and they were. At Conklin, they come and go and they've got a letter on file from me advising them not to display any of their vehicles on the grassy area or to expand their paving to match their display area.
Understood. I'm not being critical of what we've done. I'm just saying how difficult will the clarification of these policies be? That was my question and it will be somewhat difficult.
It'll come down to convincing you that we have good definitions of display areas, storage areas and parking areas.
Thank you.
We understand that that's our responsibility.
Any other questions for Mr. Rogers? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'd probably add staging area to that since we heard that term today also, so.
Make sure you state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, good afternoon. My name's James Hall with Great Plains Manufacturing, 1525 East North Street here in Salina. I was made aware that this was going to be talked about today, early last week, and I appreciate some of the text amendments that Dean has up here for discussion. I think there are some very valid points that we need to talk about. My biggest question to you all is, we need to understand the difference between parking and storage. And what we're going to define as parking and what's going to be parked on parking and what is storage? We're part of that gray area that's up on East North Street. All of our land up there is zoned I-3. We do have one small lot that is zoned I-2, but primarily we're all I-3. I-3 by its definition is the heaviest industrial zone in a community. Yeah, he's got us there. Which, as you look about it and think about it, you would like to think that it was far away from residential areas, from other business zones. And if, if you think about how planning is done, you've kind of got your residential and then you move to your commercial and you're, you're trying to push that industrial zone out to an area where things are not always as neat and tidy as maybe they can. Although I will state, if you drive by and you look at our facilities, we exceed all of the landscape requirements and many things like that, just because we want to have the place nice and we take a lot of pride in it. We have acres of paving right now. That paving is predominantly used for employee parking. We do have some finished goods that sit on that and we have some of that area that is for loading of containers and trucks. And a lot of that is because there's some convenience involved there. We do also have much more acreage of gravelled storage area that is for finished goods, unused materials, work in process, that if we were to do another expansion and a, there was a trigger that said, to do that expansion and to bring more jobs to Salina, Kansas, you've got to now pave all of that as a caveat to do this. That would be, that would be hard to talk about. So as we talk about this, I'd like to have you guys work real hard on defining what is parking? Is parking where we're going to put employees, customers, visitors, those things? And then is storage where we're allowed to put finished goods, work in process, other areas, other equipment that is not necessarily part of the public, that you would typically see in a, in an I-2 or I-2 or I-3 zone? So, so that to us is, is very important. We have been successful in another one of our communities that we work in, in using millings as a, as a surface to put down over a heavy rock base to keep the dust down. And then if you, if you put a, an oiled surface over that and keep it for a year or two, you almost end up with an asphalt. So there are some creative ways that you can do some economical solutions to paving or storage that don't necessarily require concrete. So that, that's the main reason that I'm here today is to say, before you move forward with this, or if you decide that maybe we just need to, in an I-2 and an I-3, back off and let it stay as it is, let's talk about the definitions. And I'd also state that whatever you do for an I-2 or an I-3, regardless of where it is in this community, that it's all the same. That's, I think that's real important. I'm just one member of an I-3 community that's here. There's a few others, but I would like to have this be a very level playing field for everybody that's involved. Thank you.
Any questions for James or Mr. Hall?
I just have one, if I may, and, and I could be well wrong, but I think there's an area at Great Plains as you're coming in from the west going, and you just about get to your headquarters, your offices. And you have an area there out in front that looks like a little park, has a little gazebo, and sometimes you have finished product parked there, and that's grass. Now, in, in your interpretation, would that be parking or would that be storage?
That would be a special event because what happens when you see stuff parked around that gazebo is that means that we have dealers here from typically all over the world that are here for a, an event that's happening in our new conference center. And so we're doing a short-term display, product parade, and that's what's happening.
And that would be covered by the special event policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Sir, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Thank you, Mr. Chair Dennis Lawr, Salina Area Chamber of Commerce, 120 West Dash. And I appreciate the opportunity to present to you comments from the Chamber's Executive Committee. As we have discussed this and as they review the comments, I'm going to read to you. In 2007, the Salina-Saline County Economic Development Strategic Plan addressed concerns about the regulatory and building services functions in our community. The plan noted, and I quote, "The commitment to service quality initiative of the city of Salina has been well received and is seen as a positive step forward. We believe that progress towards a system that protects the public and supports business development can continue," end quote. The strategic plan then called for specific improvements and specific action items related to policy, procedures and personnel. And it's our observation that progress has occurred in each of those areas since 2007 as new approaches have been implemented to meet the stated objective of the plan and that was a system that protects the public and supports business development. We're concerned that this new regulation may take us a step backwards. In 2012, the Salina-Saline County Economic Development Steering Council prioritized the need to improve supply chain efficiencies for employers. A transload facility, as you just heard Tim talk about, is one of several effective ways to support growth and expansion of existing employers. In addition, this facility will better position Salina for new business growth and capital investment. The cost increases that Tim talked about because of this regulation, and you heard what he talked about, driving the point beyond affordability, creates a concern for us that this proposed regulation blunts progress in this specific economic development priority. In 2013, the Salina-Saline County Economic Development Steering Council observed, and I quote, "It's not enough to identify roadblocks to growth. They need to be removed." The current Economic Development Strategic Plan notes, and I quote, "In order to improve the business climate in Salina and create an environment that is friendlier to growth, unnecessary barriers must be studied," end quote. The plan promises we'll work together to identify the barriers and remove them to create a competitive advantage for businesses operating in this Salina area. Most residents and business owners in Salina believe that our community assets should allow us to have faster business and population growth than our trend has been over the last three decades," end quote. This section of the Economic Development Strategic Plan creates a vision. It will take less time and cost to enter the market. Salina will enjoy the reputation of a community that wants to promote growth." That's a direct quote from the Economic Development Strategic Plan. "We're concerned that this proposed regulation, if not implemented right, works against that spirit and that intent." Earlier today, Tim's staff or Tim's team and my team, we hosted a employer into the community, a manufacturer looking at Salina as a growth project. In three years, this firm projects 100 employees, all at the quality or premier wage level, which is to say that all the wages are above the current county median wage and several of those jobs are actually more than 110% of the, of the current county median wage, quality and premier wage positions. The prospect visited existing buildings in the community, at the airport and not at the airport, to Jamie's last point. They looked at a variety of locations where they would construct a new building, north into town, south into town, southeast part of the community, southwest part of the community. This particular user will need 45,000 square feet of parking. Should they go the route of new construction, the regulation will increase their project cost for the parking lot from what the engineers estimate would be $60,108 to a projected price more than $335,000. It's an increase more than five and a half times just the cost of that. They are still working through their issues as, in thinking through their storage and outside storage versus inside storage. They're growing, growing quickly, and they're at the point where they're still trying to figure out, they're going to stay where they're at, but expand into Salina, trying to figure out which of our products do we move over to Salina? And based on what they saw today, they said, you know, in that one building, we could put everything inside. Well, in that building, we could probably put everything inside. We'd like to ultimately construct a new building. We'd probably have to put some stuff outside, deciding depending on which one of our products we'd move over to Salina. What Tim doesn't know, because I haven't had a chance to brief him yet, and he should not have been reading his email while he was sitting there, was that as we stood at the, at the airport and, and looked over and I said, now over there, and we talked about the transload facility, and they want to be a user. They want to be that eighth user where Tim talked about seven users of that facility. That's an important part of attracting them. As we were standing out at the airport and down right by Vortex Avenue, on Vortex Avenue, and we were describing for them and pointing out some of the businesses there in the area, I had the same thought that Tim talked about. I looked at all that non-gravel, or excuse me, non, non-concrete parking at Eldorado I looked at all that non-gravel, or excuse me, non, non-concrete parking at Eldorado National, and I thought, trying to attract a new business into the community and telling them they've got a concrete that or asphalt that would, would be extremely expensive. So even though they might be grandfathered in, it, again, we're, we are concerned that this regulation would hamper the competitive economic opportunity for the community. So with that, I'll just echo what, what both Tim and what Jamie talked about. We'd like the opportunity to sit down, explore some of these issues about storage, as Jamie talked about, what's the definition of storage, parking, and kind of help think through these kind of issues so we can, we can hit whatever the objective is, but not thwart our, our efforts to, to grow the community.
With the new person you're looking at, though, you're not trying to get away from, if they're hiring 110 people, they would need to have 110 parking spots. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, on concrete, paved surfaces. But their additional storage, if they would need to be outside the building, could be gravel.
Correct.
But they're not trying to get, you're not trying to get away from, we have a, we're going to build a 40,000 square foot facility, and we need, I think you said 45,000 square feet of parking.
No, you, I, you're right, and I, but you're right. I, I was incorrect in that terminology, but as a place for outside storage
Okay.
of their product, because where they're at now, they do a significant amount of outside storage.
Okay.
And so that, again, again-
That is correct, I'm just trying to understand, parking and storage.
Yeah, thank you. And it goes back exactly to, my terminology goes back to what I, what was in the original memo from Dean, and again, goes back to Jamie's point about trying to define what's parking, what's storage, what's special event, or special events, and how, how we think through those issues. So we hit whatever the objective is, but not imposing a new regulation that's going to thwart things.
So Dennis, this may be the same question asked in a somewhat different way, but Ken, does this company have a breakdown of the space that would be parking versus storage? I mean, I'm assuming the total, 335,000 that you're talking about is all the storage, all the space that they need, right?
Potentially.
So do you know a percentage of storage versus parking on that?
Not yet, because they left town at about 2:00 in the afternoon and were driving back, and they said, when we get back, you'll get an email, and we'll give you a couple different scenarios that we're interested in, and they want Tim's team and my team to work together and figure out, and, and come back to them with a couple different scenarios as to how things might work.
Right.
So they said, specifically said, one concept could be a lot of storage outside. What does that mean? Ah, you know, they're, where they're at now, they've got a lot more than 45,000 square feet outside storage. Maybe not so much with a different concept. What does that mean? Oh, 45,000 square feet of, of outside. And then one concept, maybe no outside storage. So they just know where they're at now, they're out of space, they want to move into Salina if we can make the project work.
Would the cost of just parking, would they consider that restrictive, do you think?
I don't know.
Okay.
And I want to speak to that. David.
All right. I appreciate Dennis's comments.
Excuse me, if I can, but, but David, that's the point. We want to make sure that that doesn't become an issue that is restrictive. So I don't know that it would be restrictive relative to this prospect, but that's the point. We want to make sure that we're not doing something that has that unintended consequence that Jerry and several of you talked about. I'm sorry, Ken.
No problem. I appreciate Dennis's comments, the business community wanting to work with Planning Commission, work with city, to sit down and look at how this might impact things as we really look through it and see all the, because you've got to visualize the, the various things that could happen from this and the results, and then some will be good, some will be bad. So, but how do we do that? That's a question for Dean and just a minute. The other point is, there's really two things I see right now that have come up, and that's parking versus storage. That's, that would have to be clarified. The other one I'm still confused on is how does A1 ag fit into this? And I, I just can't visualize that. I, I just, I don't know, I mean, I'm thinking of a tractor running around the field, it's a little hard to pave that, isn't it? But ag is, has got to be considered. And then the other is, what Jerry said earlier, is while we're looking at the business side, I do think that homeowners have some concern about maybe what's parking and what's storage. Parking for my fourth car along the side of my house might be considered storage if I never drive it, and could that be gravelled where my drive in and out of my garage may have to be paved? That has to be considered too. So those are things that have to be worked through for me to feel comfortable with this, but I want you to understand, I'm all for appropriate paving to improve a community. But how do you get to that study? How do you propose that we get a study done? We could sit here all night, and this is not sitting around a table with a committee, really looking through the, the issues. How do you do that?
You know, one of the things Tim talked about was, what do other communities do? And that's important, and you can always find examples that are more restrictive and more lenient than your particular community. It's like any statistics, you can take statistics to make the case that you have, but, you know, would, I think it goes to two things, Ken. It would be looking to see what are the regulations that exist in other communities? And then going the next step further, though, and maybe, maybe the, the code's the same in all those communities, and say, but, but, but what in reality is the enforcement of that code in those particular communities? And are they enforcing those to different degrees? You know, yep, you've got hard surface parking. We can see it. Good enough. That's okay with us. Other communities may go the next step, say, as was alluded to, we want to understand and, and we want to see what the, the density is, and we want to know the quality of the parking itself and of the concrete that was put in place. That's a different level than just, yeah, I can see that it's hard surface. And so an examination of what other communities are doing, what are their requirements, and are they adding extra steps? What are they doing to, to sign off on a hard surface lot, for example? Those would all be probably things to study and compare.
And I would like to see, you know, that's what I would like to see. I'd like to see a thorough study so that we don't have some unintended consequences that throws us right back to where we were in 1990 when they went through this and then had to reverse their decision somewhat. So how that committee works, I'm all for that to start with, rather than us trying to solve it here at this bench over the next three or four hours. A committee needs to look at, and Dean, is that something you typically do? You would administratively put a community together, maybe some business, some residential, and some planning commission, and some administration from the city to look at this issue a little more closely? Is that how, is that how it would work?
That could be done if that was the direction of the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
And I, I would want to note that before we even got to this stage where the Planning Commission initiated this text amendment for consideration, we looked at about 15 different Kansas communities, and the one thing, and again, as Mr. Lauber mentions, administration enforcement are another matter, but just reviewing the actual ordinances themselves, the only two communities we found that allowed for any form of gravel parking were the city of McPherson and the city of Salina. All the other communities, if you reviewed their ordinance based on what they said, they had no exemptions to the paved parking requirement. Only McPherson and Salina allowed for gravel parking in industrial zones. And so that, that was part of information the Planning Commission was given before we initiated this.
Ken, I think in my answer to your question, and I'll sit down, and if there are any other questions, would be that one of the great things about this community is that the spirit of partnership and we all work together. I think the private sector, those that are the economic development partners in the city, and I didn't speak for Tim, but, and, you know, the airport authority, city, private sector, the business folks that you saw here, I think we'd, we'd sit down and work, we'd work well together, and this would be an example of, we've got a task, and we've got to figure out how to, how to, how to work together.
I appreciate that.
Any other questions? Mr. Lauber, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Appreciate your time. Anybody else from the public like to address this time? Please approach the bench and state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name is Lynn Elder with Research Products Company, McShares Incorporated, 1835 East North Street. We're neighbors to Mr. Hall's, Great Plains over there. There's another thing, he pretty much, everything's pretty much been covered except for the fact that, I'd like to mention maybe another consequence of adding, or in our case, if, if we had or the desire to expand our business, it was mentioned, new businesses. Well, there's also the case of existing businesses that have been in Salina for some time, doing business one way, and then maybe with the idea of expansion, that would also affect them as well, and maybe their decision-making process as to whether it was feasible or not to stay in Salina or even expand. And also, another consequence of adding a great deal of paving is storm runoff and, and the potential of, you know, where does all that water go? At least storm rains do percolate through gravel surfaces, and so I would like that to be taken into consideration. I mean, you could end up with a, a pretty big problem there. I mean, the drains, the existing drains are designed to handle, you know, what we have now. What happens if we add, you know, 45,000 square feet of pavement in certain areas? In new, in a new project, obviously, you have your retention ponds that goes into the design, but when you're talking about an existing area, that, that could be a pretty big problem. So that's just one thing I wanted to add for sure.
How do you feel on the parking versus storage for your specific
Yeah.
existing business?
Yeah, we're, we're similar, you know, the, the front, we're in the I, we're probably I three as well, same as Great Plains. Most of our front area where employees and customers and visitors park is, it's all paved. We have two large buildings, and then behind, we have a paved drive-through, both of our buildings to get to the back of our property, which is fenced. We have, we do work back there. We have delivery trucks that actually go back and access that back area. It's not really visible to the public, and it seems like one of the goals here is aesthetics and as well maybe dust and safety. And I, I think that, and I don't know, maybe you guys could answer this question in the permit process, if someone needs to do a, a project, don't, I mean, in the permit process, isn't there a way for the Planning Commission or the, the Engineering Department to review that project and decide whether they need a certain amount of parking places paved or access paved or, I mean, don't we already have a means to kind of control a, a project or a new project or even a, a upgrade to say that, you know, we would ask that you come back with a plan that paves this area for all of your, your, maybe your employees or your customers, and maybe if it's in the back of the property, they could examine it on a case-by-case basis. It just seems like this, this proposed ordinance is kind of a one-size-fits-all plan. I, I think that, and maybe you could look at it and say, we already have a means or a way to, to get these properties or new projects to look the way we would like the city of Salina to look without just putting a, a one-size-fits-all plan to everybody. So that's the end of my comments. Thank you.
Questions? Thank you, Mr. Lauber.
Lynn, while you're there, and I just, I would like to ask this question, not just of you, but really of any, anybody who has presented today. I may be mistaken about this, but it seems to me that in the presentations, I didn't hear that any of your presen, I'm sorry, given the parking, storage distinction, which if we take Mr. Andrew's word, can be handled at an administrative level, I'm not hearing that present operations or even anticipated expanding operations would be affected by the requirement for paving as written in this. So I just want to be clear, is, am I incorrect about that? I just, I'd like to get some clarity about that.
I, I feel like the, maybe the rear driveway access that we have for the, for our trucks to come back and deliver to our rear, we have a production facility in the back, and the delivery trucks actually drive on an unpaved surface to get to that back facility. Once they get past the front of the, of the buildings, we have a drive, a paved drive to the back, but then there's, we kind of felt, and maybe we need to look at it a little closer, that's one of the reasons why we were here in attendance, to see if we could find out exactly, well, one, what was the goal, or what is the goal of the, of the ordinance? Number two, how, the definition part is still for us a question
Yeah.
because those, those are access driveways, however, that we, you know, we might have a truck back there once a week. It's not something that we commonly use, but at the same time, we felt or were afraid that this might apply to those driveways.
Right. And I would stand to be corrected by the commission members or by Mr. Andrew or staff, but my understanding would be that this, your, in your case, it would be grandfathered in, correct?
Correct. Yeah, we, we would know.
Unless you expand, unless you expand, but the present use would be grandfathered in.
Absolutely. We're here because we, we're, you know, hoping to expand at some point in time, and we, we're looking to the future.
Great. Thank you for your time. Anybody else from the community like to speak?
Yes.
Name and dress.
Good afternoon. Jeff Mays, Compa Realty, 157 South Seventh. I appreciate everybody's comments. I certainly appreciate our major manufacturers being here, as they're a big part of the community, as you all know. The one thing that hasn't been addressed is the smaller guys that are out there, very much to Commissioner Box's concerns, the mechanic that's on North Street or whatever that, okay, suddenly has to go in and at the cost of, call it $4 a square foot, pave, you know, whatever it might be, 20,000 square feet, that makes a difference whether you move forward or not on these guys' budget. I recently negotiated, or helped negotiate, a contract between an existing landlord and a tenant, that the building was needing improvement in a very, very big way, they've been there a very long time, would not take much at all to hit one of those triggers from a value standpoint in regards to the property. The lot that they used was 90,000 square feet. So we would have improved the value and hit one of those triggers in a heartbeat by sent, by putting in 50,000, 50, excuse me, $50,000 worth of improvement in the interior finish, and suddenly had to pave 90,000 square feet? It just, it would not have been feasible at all. And I encourage you to think about the depreciating factor, the depreciating aspects you're putting on, on our I two and I, and I three industrial property. The values are going to go down by virtue of this, by virtue of this code. And my question is, if paving at all is the answer, what was the question? Is this truly because we want to be able to drive down States or North Street and not see gravel? Is it an aesthetic thing? I mean, what is, why are we, why are we here entertaining this question? I don't understand that. Is it because everybody else is doing it? Well, I would tell you, from a person that recruits businesses to this community for a living, it's very difficult to win that game because they can go anywhere in the state or region. And as it, to Dennis's comments in removing roadblocks, this is creating a roadblock, but, and don't be confused in that it, that it isn't. Maybe not for the great big companies, maybe not for the national companies, but the smaller guys that are looking at bringing 25, 50 jobs, or the guy that wants to expand his, his operation that's here, and suddenly he can't. He can't add 50, 50,000 to his building because he's going to have to pay. I just encourage you to think about all that, and what are, what are we going to accomplish by doing this? Is it just going to make it nicer to look at? If that's the case, I would, I would encourage you to think about overlay districts on Ninth Street where we do have some I two on our main arteries and some of that, and designate those, but allow some of our industrial areas to be just that, industrial in nature. So, thank you very much.
Any questions for Mr. Mays? Anybody else from the public like to address the public hearing? If not, I'll close the portion of the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for additional comments and questions.
I would refer the commissioners to page three of your report, and we've identified five alternatives, or there could be more, or variations of the same. One would be to recommend approval of the draft. Text amendment is drafted and is presented. Again, that doesn't include some of the insertion language that we, we showed you as options. You could recommend approval of the text amendment with any additions to or modifications of the draft language, and majority of the commissioners are supportive of. You could continue the public hearing on this item to allow for additional public input on the proposed change. That additional public input could range from allowing additional time for things such as Mr. Rogers indicated a desire to look at the storage area exception language and see how comfortable he was with that, to- and see how comfortable he was with that, to having the creation of a committee to steady the matter before it came back for consideration. You could refer this item back to staff for additional study, or preparation of additional alternatives, or you could recommend no changes be made at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I think that we need to continue this item for further discussion. I'm concerned that we are creating disincentives for I-2s and I-3s, in particular, the airport. I thought that Commissioner, or Mr. Rogers' comments about the special nature of the airport authority were well-taken, that it is specifically referred to in the goals for Salina and the comprehensive plan. It has some special issues with that, and we want to keep a level playing field for all of the I-2 and I-3 categories. So, if we can work out some compromises in the discussion about storage versus paving, there needs to be that further conversation, but I think we need to postpone it. I'm in favor of exempting the airport authority from the whole application, but if we can work out the language to the satisfaction of the airport authority, I think we could go that direction.
Just to make a, I didn't hear that as a motion, and I would like for it not to be at this point, but I really think that we have uncovered a lot of things that maybe we haven't looked at as carefully as we should, and I don't know that we can do that here, even next month with four more business people to talk to us. I think we need to find those key business people, manufacturing people, get them together, sit down. So, I'm more inclined to say that we go ahead and refer this back to staff with the direction to get those folks at a table and come up with a plan that at least has some broader base than what it has at this point.
And I too, that was my comments earlier, I'd certainly agree that, I think this needs to go back to a committee with representation from those who are impacted, both favorably and maybe not so favorably, and sit down and talk about it, come back with some kind of recommendation. We can't make that decision here at this table now, and I think they tried that before, as I said, in 1990, it didn't work so well, and I don't want to be a failure again. I'd be ready with a motion at any time.
I've got a little bit more discussion before we make motions, and I think maybe there are other commissioners that want to talk, I've been talking plenty. I'm going to shut up and let.
Anybody else have any other comments? If not, you have the floor.
It seems to me, I'm not averse to that, I think it could use more study. The general trend of this, I think I'm comfortable with for the purposes that Mr. Andrews spelled out before, but I think it might help clarify, if we made in the draft of this, if we added the options number one and number two regarding vehicle display areas and areas with gravel and asphalt middings that are maintained to eliminate blowing dust and erosion, I would move that we add that to the draft for clarity, and understand that it's subject to change after discussion, but it seems to me that would clarify the intent of the commission, and I, obviously, I'd stand to be corrected if that's not correct. So, I make that a motion.
Have a motion on the table, any additional comments or second to that?
That motion is that regardless of what happens otherwise, that those two items be inserted in the planning commission's draft.
And that's item one, and?
I would just.
One and two.
I would just explain procedurally, if your preference as a commission was to refer this item back to staff for additional study. What we would do is take it back for additional study, we would prepare another draft, bring it to you, see if you were comfortable with that in terms of sponsoring or initiating that, knowing that that draft might be based on additional input than from what we have today. Then we would initiate a new text amendment, have new notice of that, and have a, a public hearing on that new draft at some future date. So, essentially, rather than being a continuation of this item, you would be referring it back to staff. We would work up a new draft, a new application, bring that to you to see if you wanted to initiate that, and basically, then we would have a hearing on that draft.
And I would be comfortable with that, but I'd like some discussion about whether the commission, is there a consensus on the commission about that particular issue?
I don't have a problem with those two items. I frankly agree with Mr. Elder's comment about the majority of this is about aesthetics, and it bothers me a great deal if it hampers a businessman or an entrepreneur from realizing the vision that he wants to create. So, if we can access the portions of it that help upgrade our community standards legally, that's nice, but I don't think that we should put any burden on the commercial community.
Maybe aesthetics should be part of the conversation, that aesthetics should be inserted into this, this verbiage, and where you put your parking and where you put your asphalt. I mean, if you're worried, concerned about aesthetics, then maybe that should be inserted into this.
Well, I'd kind of hope that the city commissioners that were here would have remained, because when it comes to the new parts of town, you have a little more leeway to set out the directions that construction has to go, and you're in some of the older portions of town, well, then you're talking about rehabilitation and reconstruction, and that seems to be some of their concerns at this point. So, I would have liked to have heard them address this, some of these items, because these are all disincentives to anybody that wants to reconstruct or rehabilitate a property.
I would still like to go ahead and have us really take a hard look at sending this back to staff, because I think we've identified in a short time some problems. At the same time, I, and I want to say this with great respect to the business community, they supported me in my career for almost forty years, and I, in turn, though, gave them a pretty good product as a school administrator. And that's where my comment comes in. Regulation, by its very nature, looked at from one vantage point only as a disincentive. But sometimes, regulation also creates an environment where people want to live, people want to raise their families, people want their business to be able to be protected in the event that some catastrophic event occurs, so that all the emergency equipment in Salina can get there and get there in short order and get their job done. So, not all regulation is a disincentive, and I'm, so, I'm really concerned that we're going to get a little carried away today and do something that we think is going to be helpful, and it's going to be a problem. And we've had the level of paving or unpaving for a number of years, and I really don't think that another sixty days is going to be a big problem for us. I think we just take our time, back up a step, look at it, figure out what we need to do. I think some regulations are good. I don't know if this is the one or not.
I had a motion on the table which dies for lack of a second, is that correct?
Yep.
The commission would open up for another motion or any other discussion that you'd like to have?
I have a motion.
Like to hear it?
I'd make a motion that we refer this item back to city staff with the understanding that they form a committee to study both the advantages and disadvantages and uniqueness of potential paving requirements in I-2, I-3, and A-1. I further would hope that that committee could adopt a potential policy revision that might be brought back to this committee, to the planning committee for review. In addition to that, I would suggest that the committee members should be made up of business, city staff, planning commission representation, if that's permissible, and then private property owners.
Second.
Have a motion with a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, on behalf of all the attendees today, I'll think I can speak for them, thank you for the action today. I will make myself available to Mr. Andrews to work on that, on that committee also, and I think that we can work quickly and to bring back and help Mr. Andrews bring back some recommendations and some suggested language that kind of balances things out and accomplishes the goals that you have in mind, but also helps with future development and the burdens, kind of handle the burden with some of the changes, and so, we will work on that, and thank you for your action today.
Thank you.
Tim, I want to say, I want to say thank you for the detailed presentation also, that was helpful.
And myself, thank you to Mr. Hall, Mr. Rogers, Mr. Elder, Mr. Mays, and Mr. Lauber for taking the time to help us understand this and the ramifications of something that may be put in place that would hinder development for the city. So, thank you for your time.
There's been a motion on action and approval of a break.
Mr. Chairman, can we take a short break?
We're going to take a quick, three-minute break, and we shall return.
You just lost a quarter minute.
Respectively, General Motors saw September sales slump.
My God, it's national security. Why don't we just?
All right, we'll bring it back again for item M-13-8, and we'll have a report from Dean City Staff.
What John's going to put up for you is what we have referred to on several occasions as the fuzzy map, and this is the map that's in our current comprehensive plan document, and the edges and boundaries don't correspond necessarily to parcel boundaries. We have discussed that it's sometimes difficult to interpret this map in terms of whether a particular property has a future land use designation versus the property next door to it. We've discussed it in the context of West Crawford. What we're proposing here is that this map that I have propped up in front of you, that hopefully you can see, is a map that we have produced internally with our GIS, and we are, the, this map would essentially be pulled out of the plan, and this map that you see in front of you would be inserted in its place, but we just wanted to highlight what it does and does not do. When the, when the plan was first adopted, it was adopted with the planning commission, city commission, having three corrections that did not necessarily get made by the plan consultants who prepared these drawings. One, we had a property out at Old Forty and I-135 that has oil storage tanks on it. It was supposed to be part of the green conservation area and got left out and made white, and so, we asked for that to be converted back to green to show it consistent with the other conservation areas. We had a property on West Magnolia that is the Nordbo home site. It was shown in the conservation area, but it's not actually in the mapped Hundred Year Floodplain, so at Mr. Nordbo's request, the map was to be amended to show that otherwise it was not, but it will, will be on this map that we proposed here. Mr. Stan Byquist requested that the property in Lakeview Estates that's located between Ohio Street and the Knox Sandpit, which shows as yellow on this map, that it be indicated as the dark brown urban residential, because he was contemplating some form of multifamily housing there, which the urban residential would support and the suburban residential would not, and both the planning commission and city commission at the time of adoption thought that was appropriate. Since the plan was adopted, there were two changes recommended. One was in the Oath Edition, which is at I-135 and Waterwell Road, and that related to the Old Dominion Trucking Case, and this commission recommended, the city commission concurred, that the area between West Dry Creek and I-135 be changed to an employment area. And then, on this map that we have up here that we've shown repeatedly, the corner, southeast corner of Centennial and Crawford, continued to show a suburban residential. That was recommended to show that as commercial. I would point out to you that we had some discussions about the West Crawford corridor. This map that we produced and was produced before the plan was adopted, shows the west, the C-5-zoned areas of the West Crawford corridor as commercial, and that correction never got made on this version, so it actually was supposed to show as, as commercial already, but we had to live with what was produced. The substitute map also has the East Salina Master Plan area, the hospital medical master plan area, the North Ohio Gateway, and the South Ninth overlay on there. Also, at your recommendation, the landfill was shown as public, quasi-public instead of just being blank. And so, what we're asking you to endorse is that this map that you see in front of you, that has hard edges and is parcel-specific, that you recommend that that map be substituted for the map that you see on the screen, and at all future meetings, we would be showing you this map and not that map. This map also has every street in the city on it, it has all the parcels and parcel boundaries, and so the edges are clearly defined, the overlays are on there, and then, what we would also do is take this map that you see in front of you, and it would be put on the city's website instead of this map here, which is a generalized map that doesn't, doesn't really help you with specific parcels. So, our request would be to have you endorse the substitution of this map for the one that's on the screen, and the reason that we would recommend that is that just that having a parcel-based map would just be so much more accurate and would help with you, the city commission, and landowners, and prospective landowners, to clearly look at the plan and see what it says about a specific piece of property, which right now, you can't really do. The other thing is if we have control of this map, we can keep it updated and accurate over time, whereas this map, which was produced by the consultants, is, is difficult for us, if not impossible, to modify. So, what action we're asking for you today is to adopt this map you see in front of you instead of the map that's on the screen.
How would people see that map from a, if they go to the city.org website, to be able to see what's, which one will be on the website now?
We would get rid of the one that you see there, and we would substitute this one in an electronic form.
Okay.
And what you would be able to see on this that you can't see on that is all the other streets that are missing, and the really, this has all the property ownership boundaries and that on it, so the edges are much more clearly defined, and that's, that's what we like about it, and if, if there are amendments made to the plan, then we can control that map and update it internally, instead of having to rely on the good graces of the consultant.
Any questions for staff?
I'd like to say, though, I appreciate the work on that, I know it took some time. I too have been concerned about the, what you referred to as the fuzzy map, it's really difficult to.
It's difficult for us to inform you, because the edges are fuzzy, and we're, we're referring to this map internally to try to help us, and we think it would be great if it was available to the public and to you to use officially.
You ready for motion?
Now, entertain a motion.
I move that we approve application M-13-6 to amend the future land use map for the city of Salina to a parcel-based map.
Second.
Before we vote on that, I would open it up for any public comment. If there's anybody in the audience who would like to comment on that? Seeing that, I'll bring it back, and I have a first and a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Same side opposed. Hearing none, motion passes. Hearing that, motion passes. Okay. All right, moving on, it may help us if we move the...
I'm starting to...
Can't see all the people who are in the audience.
Long-sleeve shirt.
There they are.
I keep pulling them off.
We miss you guys. I wanted to take that away.
Well, the saga of South Cherry Street continues. I will blame this partially on Mr. Pernie because he, he led us in this direction at least initially. But where, where we are with this application is we started out with a request for I-2 zoning and it's Mr., the applicant's position that it was his belief that the property was already zoned I-2 when he purchased it, but that is neither here nor there because the fact of matter is, it, it was in fact zoned RS. We've had all the discussion about what it's zoned, what the comprehensive plan designates the property. What happened was you, we did not encourage the applicant to go for I-2 zoning because we thought that was preferable to C-5. We just felt that the only parcel that was west of Dry Creek and south of State Street that was zoned anything but RS was the I-2 zone Lot 5. And that this was contiguous to that, so that, that seemed to make sense from a zoning standpoint to expand the existing I-2. What we, what the Planning Commission did was directed Mr. Deathridge to amend the request to Plan C-5, continue this item to today's meeting to allow site development plan to be prepared and submitted for your review. So, the initial application was jointly filed by Mr. Deathridge and Mr. Wooster. The goal at the time was to take the area, north area outlined in blue, which is owned by Mr. Wooster. You have the sandwich piece in between, that's, that's Lot 5 that was already zoned I-2 for better or worse. And then you have Mr. Deathridge's piece to the south. So, as we pointed out, this has been in the city since 1887. It was outside the city from 1933 to 1971 and brought back into the city. And then in 1978, the Planning Commission, City Commission approved a zoning change on Lot 5, which is between Mr. Deathridge's property and Mr. Wooster's property. The I-2 zoning was requested to allow construction of a repair garage that was never built. The Planning Commission, City Commission at that time found that the permitted uses in the I-2 district would be compatible with uses of other property in the immediate vicinity and that the map amendment was, is necessary or justified by changing conditions in the area. What we pointed out to you is that if, if we were sitting in the chair at that time, we would have characterized that decision as inappropriate spot zoning regardless of its justification because it's just too small an area. So, the Wooster, out of the chair building and the salvage yard are pre-existing, not We've gone through the different renditions here. And the follow-up action that you took at your last meeting was to direct Mr. Deathridge to amend his application. You've basically deleted Mr. Wooster's property from the application request area, asked Mr. Deathridge to modify his request to Plan C-5 and submit a plan. So, John, could you put that up, please?
The two things that we need to figure out, and it seems to be a moving target, we need to hear from Mr. Deathridge to clearly and distinctly what it is that he plans to do with this property if it's rezoned. Because we, we have done our best, but it seems like we cannot accurately characterize for you what it is he wants to use this property for and what he wants to use it. So, this is a survey of the property. It contains 26,116 square feet. The plan would not have any building on it because no building can be constructed because of the lack of utilities. Being no building, there's no parking required because we have no employees or customers. In a Plan C-5 district, there would be a requirement for a front yard landscape or buffer strip. There would be a driveway on Cherry Street. There, again, you would have a surfaced area for display, or not display, but for the storage of equipment and perhaps service vehicles. Drainage would be directed back to the old Dry Creek Channel. And as a Plan C-5, you would have four square feet of sign area allowed per lineal foot of frontage. One thing that C-5 does require is that it requires outdoor storage areas to be enclosed by screening along all lot lines that abut a residential district. Well, all these lot lines abut residential districts and the property to the south actually has a house on it at 116 South Cherry. So, what we need to discuss today is what is the actual plan for using this property? Does Plan C-5 actually work or is I-2 needed? You have recommended that Mr. Wooster's area be deleted from the request area. He is present today. And then we need to figure out what sort of, if we have fencing around the perimeter, what that consists of. And we need to inform you where the screening is actually required. So, we've just had this discussion about paving versus non-paving and all of that. And staff is having a hard time believing that Mr. Deathridge would want to pave this entire 26,000 square foot area. So, that's what we're depicting on the plan. So, just to refresh where we are, you did not necessarily agree with the City Commission's urban residential vision for this area, but you took action that said that the area being discussed was too small to justify a comprehensive plan amendment and that the entire area from West Dry Creek all the way over to the levee needed to be looked at in its entirety. But where we are today is looking away from I-2 to seeing if a Plan C-5 would actually work. And then we have offered up some possible findings you could make. The main appeal of a Plan C-5 versus the I-2 is that you could construct and argument that a limited, very limited Plan C-5 could be justified under the current urban residential designation without a plan amendment. But that is, that is the primary appeal. Again, if it's I-2, the uses are more open. There's not a requirement for paving. The, the screening would remain in place. But now, we have to figure out whether the Plan C-5 would work for what Mr. Deathridge wants to use the property for. And then, we would also want to hear any comments that Mr. Wooster had. So, we've done our best to convert the survey of the property into a prospective plan for how the property would be used. But we've had multiple meetings on this and I'm not sure that staff fully understands what Mr. Deathridge wishes to use this property for and whether the Plan C-5 will actually work for that purpose or whether I-2 is the only thing that would work. So, that would be our goals for this afternoon and I'd be open to any questions before we hear from Mr. Deathridge.
May I make a comment?
Certainly.
Okay. I failed to comment at the last meeting and I failed to be clear. So, I want to say that if you look at the record, I voted against this action. What I wanted to do, and I didn't make this clear, is I wanted a motion made to simply go ahead and approve the Deathridge property and the Wooster property as straight C-5 with no restrictions. Because I view this whole proposal of Mr. Deathridge's as a holding pattern, as something to do with the property that is constructive for his purpose, but that in the long run of 10 or 15 or 30 years, someone, either Mr. Deathridge or someone else, will eventually want to redevelop this property. And to me, looking at the surrounding properties, mainly the properties to the east, some of those also need redevelopment. They're already zoned C-5 with no restrictions and no PDD. So, that my guess at the future is it would be better to have as much of this property zoned the same in hopes that at some point we get a major redevelopment. And that we shouldn't be quibbling into great detail over Mr. Deathridge's use of the property as a construction storage site for the short term. And that of, of the, of the options placed on us, the I-2 option versus the C-5 option, the C-5 is more in accordance with what the City Commission has indicated they're interested in. And in the net result of what it'll look like, it's virtually no difference. So, that's what I wanted to do and I didn't make that clear last time. No one, Mr. Wooster didn't speak, still hasn't, and, and the consultant didn't really speak for him. But looking at his property, it also is not appropriate, in my opinion, it's not appropriate to just let it sit at the zone it's in. The zone it in, it's in is residential. If Mr. Wooster ever sells it and anybody wants to do anything commercial there, they're going to have to come back for a separate rezoning. Well, we could save a lot of time by making it commercial so that somebody could buy that property, do a commercial property there, and all they'd have to do is come in for a building permit. If we don't do that, anybody that wants to do anything other than live in Mr. Wooster's former Volkswagen Repair Center as a house, we've just created, we've just delayed a problem. And we've created another problem in effect. So, that's why I voted against coming back with a smaller, Mr. Deathridge's property only as a, as a restrictive C-5 PDD. Now, we still haven't heard from Mr. Deathridge and there still is this uncertainty about the, the plan as it's laid in front of us now is paving the whole thing. Okay, you could do that if it were a regular C-5 and it would still be a property in a holding pattern. But it's in a holding pattern with a direction toward redevelopment as an ultimate commercial use.
The, the primary distinction between a C-5 and a Plan C-5 is who sees the plan. And so, in the case of a Plan C-5, which would be Quick Shop would be an example, if it was straight C-5, I will, I will use the CVS Pharmacy plan that you will not see for redevelopment in the corner of Crawford and Ohio. That's zoned C-5 and because it's zoned straight C-5, they can level the corner and rebuild something back as long as it conforms with C-5. In the case of Quick Shop, when the city agreed to transfer ownership of that property, they required that it be done as a Plan C-5 so the city boards could review the plan. So, if this was C-5 instead of Plan C-5, staff would be reviewing this plan with Mr. Deathridge, not you all. But because the, the motion was for Plan C-5 and to bring a plan back for showing what, what would be done with the property, this has been brought back for your consideration. You still have all the options that were originally on the table, recognizing that the original application was for I-2. You have C-5 as a less, lesser change or a more restrictive change than I-2. And Plan C-5 is even a more restrictive change than changing to straight C-5. So, you have all those options on the table. But we think the most important thing is to see if C-5 will even work for what Mr. Deathridge wants to do and that, that would be the most important thing is he needs to describe for you what he wants to do on this property. And then he needs to describe how he envisions this property going from what it is today to what he wants it to be.
Can we hear from Mr. Deathridge?
Can I ask a question first? May I, Todd? I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. And this can, this truly could be a yes or no answer. Am I correct? If it's C-5, it will require paving and it will require detention, addressing detention or require landscaping regardless of what goes there?
Regardless, it will be required. It will just be done administratively by staff.
But those are still required, yes. Okay, thank you.
The standards are equivalent.
Perfect. Can we hear from the applicant, please?
I'm Ed Deathridge, DNI Rental. And on this property, what we planned on doing, and it will not be paved all at once. It will be paved as we bring the products in for the blacktop, which will be millings. So, but it will eventually be paved so that when we bring our trucks in, they're not getting stuck. So, and that's why we're, you know, going to pave it. Because before we purchased this property, there were trees and everything totally overgrown. And we've got that all cleaned out. And what we plan on doing is parking trucks in there, our overflow trucks, our equipment. We'll probably bring pads in, which we have purchased and we use and rent out in our process. And we do have to repair them every now and then, so we will probably be doing some repairs at that location if the pads are at that location and they need repaired. And that's basically...
You're going to have to help staff and the commission understand what you mean by pads.
Okay. By pads is what they are, they are a eight-foot to 14-feet-long, eight-feet-wide. And what we do is we set them down on the ground where we're putting, helping out the power companies. And what they do is they set them on the ground and they drive on these pads so that they do not leave ruts or get trucks stuck. So, their driving pad is what they are. And they're made of wood, so we'll have to nail them back together if they get tore up. So, that's by, by means of repairs. So, that's what we, you know, we got to take, maintain that stuff so that it's in good operating, operating condition. So, by fencing, we was planning on putting up a fence on the, what would be the west side of the property so that if, you know, so that people wouldn't be just going through there. So, that's, would be on the west side of the property, right there. There, right now, at the present time, on the south side of the property, there is a fence that's already blocked off from the salvage yard. So, you cannot really see what's on the salvage yard. And then on the backside, on the north side, or the east side, I'm sorry, that's all trees. And you can't even see anything unless you really look and then you'll see Perry's Auto Repair. So, and then on the north side, there's just an empty wheat field. So, and I really don't see in the future of much housing development going in through there, you know. And I'd like to plant, you know, some shrubs, but it's kind of hard to get water to them when we don't have water in there. So, it just basically makes a better area for the paved area and parking and the repair of pads. Really, it's basically the same thing I've said in the past. There's not much we can do with that property, you know. It'd be nice if we could build a building, but we can't. It'd be nice if we could build a building but we can't. If we do anything, we may put a container, a storage container in there to suffice for a time being but all it would be would be a rental container because we do have containers that we do rent out to job sites. So, basically, it's going to be a storage area, another storage area.
So, if we were to itemize for the commission the items that you would have stored within this area, they would be vehicles, landscape, equipment?
The pads, yes.
Wood, pads, and then you may mention a...
A containment, container.
What is your definition of a container?
Okay, containment container is like you've seen on the ships where they put equipment in, that's a steel building or a steel container, all steel, that you can lock up. You see them all over Slyna. Chuck Henry sells them. That's, those are the containers that I'm talking about.
Can those containers sit outside in the C5 zoning?
Well, as based on previous planning commission discussions and guidance, you may recall a time when Walmart had many of those and those were required to be removed. Those are not recognized as items that can be used as substitutes for storage buildings. They don't meet the definition of a building. You cannot, you cannot purchase one of those and bring it to your commercial site and store things in them because they're not buildings. So, we would have to get, we would have to get some... Your idea is that you would have those collected on here and then you would rent them out to people?
Yes.
For storing on your site or they'd be moved?
They would be moved. What we do with them is if we've got a job in Topeka, that storage shed will go from here to Topeka for the construction of that job site. And then when that job site's done, then it comes back. So, it's basically a rental storage unit for wherever the job ceases to need to be.
But you will not have, sorry, John. So, you won't have one specifically for your business that sits there forever? You open it up and all of your tools are inside there since you can't build a building there. Where are you going to store your tools from people getting in and stealing those and things like that?
We won't probably have any tools there.
Okay.
So, but the tools that are inside that building will be going wherever the location goes to.
So, what you rent out includes tools and everything for the specific job site?
Correct, uh-huh. Shovels, hoe, you know, just small minor stuff. It's not, you know, no high-dollar equipment.
Okay. John?
That's exactly what I was going to ask.
Let me, let me bring, oh, I'm sorry.
It's a big suitcase that comes and goes.
Right. Okay, I'm sorry. Let me bring some clarity to the paving. I mean, I don't want to be a broken record here. But you referenced Millings and you referenced paving. Millings are not paving.
That is correct.
So, when you say Millings, I get confused. When I say C5, we're talking about hard-surface concrete, poured asphalt. And so, are you clear on that? I mean, I just want to make sure you're clear on that.
Yeah.
Okay. So, that would be, that would be required to do anything. There would be the hard surface, that particular block.
And that is the primary, in what we just discussed at the beginning of the meeting, was that today in I-2, I have a business. I can have customer parking, employee parking, display areas, storage areas that are surfaced with gravel or asphalt Millings. In C5, that option is not available. So, if this is C5 or Plan C5, the surfacing of the storage area must be concrete or poured asphalt. Millings does not meet the definition of paving. So, we need to be very clear on that and that's part of the distinction between C5 and I-2.
And then I may say that I'm inclined to support what Abner mentioned earlier in the fact that I think our guidelines in the city on C5 are pretty clear and pretty administrated very easily. So, the requirements would be there then city staff could look at what they're doing and say yea or nay to it on C5. If we go Plan C5, we're going to be sitting here again trying to figure out at this bench what we're trying to do and what we're not trying to do.
Right. It's just the main thing is to get a clear... I have not heard anything that Mr. Deathridge has said that would not be permitted in C5. The primary distinction is the, that he's going to have to have a front yard buffer between Cherry Street and his fence that would be landscaped in some fashion and the surfacing internal would have to be asphalt and not gravel or Millings. Those would be the primary distinctions.
Okay, then, what about leaving it? Okay, so if it goes C5, then there's really nothing we can do with that property unless we go in there and put a lot of pavement or blacktop in, is that correct?
That is correct. But that's why we put this up there and we wanted to be very clear because from our very first meetings till now, you repeatedly told city staff that you wanted to blacktop the area that you were going to store equipment on and that in our world, blacktop means asphalt. And we're talking about 26,000 square feet and we were having a hard time believing that you were going to blacktop 26,000 square feet. So, that's why, that was at least part of the purpose of having this plan up there today so we can clarify that.
Okay. You must have misunderstood because I said that we would be bringing in blacktop, which would be old highway material. That's what we would be bringing in. That's what I had mentioned the very first time because there's no way we could fill that in all at once. That's what I had meant by bringing in blacktop.
Right. And when we hear the term "blacktop", that refers to asphalt pavement. So, that, we heard one thing and that's why, that's why we wanted to go walk through this very slowly and carefully because in all the big-picture items that have been discussed as far as this area in general and South Cherry Street, we've gotten focused on the big-picture things and not the details of the plan.
Okay, what about gravel?
So, in order to not have paving, the only district that would allow that would be back to I-2. And the planning commission needs to know that you are not willing to abide by C5 development standards which would require concrete or asphalt pavement. Because I don't, I don't think city staff, I said, when we heard the term "blacktop", we interpret that as asphalt pavement.
Then that brings us right back to the discussion that we had last time about this whole area. What is this whole area going to look like? That's really what it amounts to. Is it going to be industrial area? Is it going to be commercial area or a part of both? And I think that lends itself to, let's not do partial zone development here till we figure out what the whole concept... I don't think it's ever going to be residential. I agree with that. But I do think parts of this could be commercial and maybe parts of it industrial. But I'm not sharp enough to sit here and say what those parts should be. That's a planning process which we can do but that'd take us another two hours tonight, maybe. I say, I think to do one piece at a time, we're going to get right where we don't want to be and that's a piece of this zoning, piece of this zoning, piece of this zoning and all mixed up again.
John, could you go back to the vicinity map that shows the zoning?
So, either the C5 or the...
Well, are we, yeah.
Really?
Okay, so, when we started down this path and Mr. Perney was discussing the C5 and the fact that this, barely, but it is in fact contiguous to existing C5 zoning on the Broadway Court.
Right.
So, that could serve as a basis for that extension. But I wanted everybody to understand that there's a lot of uses in I-2 and C5 that overlap but the primary distinction is that the development standards within C5 are higher.
That's right.
And so, Mr. Perney, given the fact that Mr. Deathridge doesn't seem to be willing to commit to actual asphalt paving, which is what C5 would require, where does that put us?
Well, that leaves, we apparently have had hours of failure to communicate and that's really unfortunate. I'm still, the city, when we said we would go with I-2, the city commission turned that back to us for further discussion.
Right. And what I pointed out and didn't include in in this report was that when it came back to you, you had the option or right to resubmit your same recommendation. I think what you were attempting to do, which was to find a way, and I believe your characterization as a transition use or I think I even described it as basically an interim use of the property by not building substantial buildings here and having a lot of investment. It's simply allowing an interim use of the property until there's some development interest that would justify investment in utility extensions, whether that is residential or some other form of development. But the C5 could be stretched and it could be inserted into the existing urban residential designation. But if you're at a juncture where I-2 is the only solution, then you as a commission need to decide if you're willing to go back to that I-2 recommendation and what the basis of that would be. And the summary of possible findings that we offered for you does not support that because we were focused on C5 as an alternative. And the other thing is that you previously have taken action to say that the area requested was too small an area to justify a map amendment for employment area just for this small area here. So, it would seem to me, since partially, it would be partially staff's fault for failure to understand or communicate, that we're almost in a position where the two items referred back on the 17th of September would need to be put back in front of you and you'd have to decide whether you want to make the same two recommendations that you made before because everything we put in our report, everything that was in our comments and as possible findings was based on C5 potentially working for this site. We'd also want to, before we did anything, we'd want to hear from Mr. Wooster and see what his interest is and what it is he would be requesting from you.
Since the request is C5 or PC5 and maybe that's not going to work for you but you could accept it and, you know, work up to having all that pavement. I mean, you could take C5 away but you're not going to be able to do what you want to do. I think that's the kind of question that needs to be asked of you. If that's unacceptable, then we've got to back up and find an alternative.
What I'd like to know is what is the salvage yard zoned at right now?
Residential. salvage yard is zoned residential. It is a pre-existing non-conforming use. Mr. Wooster's building is zoned residential. It's a pre-existing non-conforming use. If that salvage yard is unlicensed or unused for a 12-month continuous period, then its grandfathering status would die and the property would no longer be able to be used as a salvage yard.
Okay. Well, Wooster's property is not, is still being used. He still has car parts and everything in that building and he has not vacated it yet.
No one has said he has.
Okay.
What I'm saying is...
Well, the paperwork here says vacated on Wooster's. Vacated.
In terms of actually being occupied by people.
Okay. So, what triggers, what triggers the... Why can't his property be non-conforming? Why is he rezoning? Everything else there is non-conforming.
Because he hasn't been doing it. Because there's, the properties that we're discussing today as well as the property direct to the north formerly had houses on it that were dilapidated and the houses were torn down, leaving a vacant property, vacant residential property behind. And since the only previous established use of this property was as a home site, there is, there is no business use to be grandfathered in because it's never been used for business purposes.
Can't be homeside, water, electricity.
I mean, I agree with, it's a bad situation. And I would, I agree with Abner. Probably the first time I've gone on record that I agreed with him. He's so eloquent and put that. But I was like, I believe that at some point this will all be rezoned at some point. And I was against paving all of this because I don't believe at some point that, you know, 10 or 20 years down the road, now somebody's got to buy not only you out but all of your paving that you have in there. So, now the lot becomes $60,000 instead of $20,000 to try and do something with that. But I don't have that flexibility to say this is what I would like. I mean, either it has to be I-2, which has been shot down and considered spot zoning, or we've got to do C5, which triggers the paving. And so, we can sit here and negotiate this all night but those are the only options that we have.
Or we can just deny the application.
Or just leave it alone, deny the application.
Well, what it comes down to is Mr. Deathridge is between a rock and a hard spot. And you've got, you've got crystal, you've got a crystal ball out here that says this is going to be urban residential that was decided by somebody 10 years ago.
No, just two years ago.
Well, even two years ago. Somebody decided this was urban residential and it's unfortunate that we don't, as a commission, believe in it.
2010.
Until we change that, he's just going to have to wait with that property till he can't do anything with it until, until we have a discussion about the comprehensive plan. That's all there is to it.
And that sort of goes back to our discussion. If that, if maybe zoned wrong but we need to look at that area. Somebody can look at that area and say, what is the right zoning for it? Then advanced development out there. Residential's probably not right. And, but may, and I-2's probably not right. C5 may not be right.
But even if the co-op plan was changed to C5, it doesn't help him out. Now, he still has to pave everything that he's either parking on or storing on.
Well, but the advantage of C5 is that this piece of property is worth quite a little bit more at C5 than it is our.
Yeah. If someone else purchases it, they're not going to build nothing.
They can't build because there's no utilities.
I understand, but someday, sir, I don't know. It's a bad situation.
It's a step in the right direction but I think it's up to Mr. Deathridge to decide if he wants C5, which we can give him, or PC5. Or take it away.
Like it is.
I may just have to wait on this because I need, I got to visit with my partner on this. Is there any way we can table this for a while until I get back with Dean? Because I'm going to have to let him know that if we do go with C5, then we will have to pave it instead of bringing in blacktop.
What I would like to do, since Mr. Wooster's been waiting here patiently, I want to hear from him. You, to try to simplify this and focus in on this, basically deleted him out of the request area. So, here, here are three options. Option one is we're in this thumbs up, thumbs down on the C5. Option two is that because of misinformation about the willingness to conform with C5, we got down this path. We can go back to September 17th and lay back in front of you the two items sent back for reconsideration. Or you may simply deny the request. If you say, since we had bad information which led us into this Plan C5 corner, you want to go back to the original referral back from the city commission, we would just put those two items back on, the request for I-2 and the request for the plan amendment. You would then take action to either send your original recommendation back You would then take action to either send your original recommendation back to the city commission or modify it. But in order to do that, we need to hear from Mr. Wooster, who was a co-applicant originally, and see where he is. But those are your three options. To simply recommend that it be denied altogether and send that back on to the city commission, or to have it back to the September 17th options, which was to either send back to the city commission your original recommendation or to modify it, or you recommend that the application simply be denied, because he doesn't want to conform with the C-5 standards. But in any event, Mr. Wooster's here, he's waited patiently, you'd have to see what his preferred action would be, whether he wants back into the application or not.
Love to hear from Mr. Wooster. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Gary Wooster, 140 Mount Barbara. Wow, you guys do a heck of a job. I don't even get paid that much, do you? Oh, gosh. Well, I would be satisfied with an appropriate zoning for what I've, for the building that I have there. And I am still using it as a repair facility for old cars, but not actively like I was. So, I can understand not wanting to go I-2 on it. However, there is I-2 very close by. And I own a property that's diagonal across the street from my shop. It's a residential house. When all of this was brought into the city, my shop building was brought in as residential, and my residential building was brought in as I-2. Now, you can correct that, and it should be corrected. Now, I don't know how you're going to do it, but I had it zoned originally, when it was in the county, zoned appropriately. But when it was brought into the city, it was brought in as residential. Now, I can understand why you're doing that, because it gives you control that you wouldn't have otherwise. But I'm not sure it's fair. So, I guess what I'm asking for is whatever is fair. If C-5 is what that needs, then that's what it should be. But it should not be residential. That's my case.
Could I ask a question? On the comprehensive plan, how do you feel about the residential suburban designation?
Well, obviously, that isn't going to work in that area. You don't want your grandkids living there, and why would you put anybody else's grandkids there?
Well, I think it's clear that that was a mistake in that area, and we just haven't cleared it up yet. I think at that other meeting where we first heard this application, a number of the commissioners were reluctant to consider a spot change in the comprehensive plan. I don't agree with that. I mean, there's macro and microeconomics that when you consider the law, laws are made, and then they're fine-tuned by the case law process. I think it's appropriate for the planning commission to make changes like that, because I think it's more important for the map to be accurate than it is to just...
Absolutely, sure.
And it's supposed to be dynamic, and it's supposed to be flexible, and so it's supposed to be changed. So, I just wanted to, I think here's somebody else agree with me, I guess, that economic is a...
Because it's going to be a tough job.
Maybe a better fit than the residential suburban.
It's not in our hands.
Thank you, Mr. Wooster.
So, again, you, based on the comments that C-5 or Plan C-5 will not really work, you could go down the path of recommending that any zoning change be denied at this time, or we can wind the clock back to September 17th. And because of the facts that we now have available, you can simply, you would have the same options there, but you would be able to either reassert your original recommendation that this should be considered for I-2 zoning, or you could modify your recommendation at that time, weighing the pros and cons of I-2 versus the future land use plan, and recommend denial that I-2 doesn't fit. But we have gone down this path, partially based on staff's, and seeing misunderstanding of what it is Mr. Deathridge is wanting to do with this property or what he's willing to do.
I entertain a motion. If you all have any more questions?
I'll make a motion. You guys feel free to shoot it down if you want to. But we need to move something off of dead center. I make a motion that we deny the application as presented for I-2. And then with that pending further...
I-2 or C-5?
PC-5, whatever. PC-5. Is that what is in front of us now?
It's now been modified to that.
All right. I move to deny the application for PC-5 as presented. And with that, encourage some study of the entire area to determine what is appropriate zoning for that area. Maybe a revision to the comprehensive plan will result.
There's a motion on the table to hear a second? Or any other discussion?
My only discussion is, we got this close last time, I think. Dean, what do we have to do to cause a review of this property, all of that property, that 55 acres? What do we have to do so that we actually get there? Will having it as part of the motion cause, trigger?
You could initiate an application similar to what was done on West Crawford. You could initiate an application for an amendment of the land use designation for this larger area, the area all the way over to the levee, and have a hearing on that and make a recommendation that the plan be, designation be amended from Dry Creek all the way over to the levee, and that that recommendation would go from you to the city commission to look at that.
That's a good suggestion. Can we just go back to where we were before that? And we had two votes to change this to an I-2 appropriate area and to approve it as an I-2. And can we simply go back to those recommendations and resubmit it to the city?
What?
With the explanation that we have discussed this at extreme length, we have explored all the alternatives, and that we still feel that the I-2...
We have to discuss the map amendment change then, don't we?
Well, you have made clear, and it would be communicated, that this is too...
Revert.
That is, the area requested is too small an area to justify a comprehensive plan map amendment, but that you think that a change to the larger area should be reviewed and considered. That would already be communicated. What you had is that you made a recommendation that the plan be amended to show this as an employment area and that the area outlined in blue be rezoned to I-2.
Right.
That went to the city commission. They sent it back for reconsideration. Your choices were to say, we're going to stick with our original recommendation, or we're going to modify that. You attempted to modify that by looking at C-5 as an alternative. We've gone down that path, and now we see it's not going to work. You could still stick with that and say, we recommend C-5, and the applicant can either live with that or not, or we can wind the clock back, and we would put the same two choices you had on September 17th in front of you, and you can decide whether you want to send the same recommendation back.
Yeah, need a second.
That sounds simpler to me.
Motion to a second.
So, we could vote to affirm our first finding in this setting and send that back to the city. The commissioners asked us to reconsider. We could send it back with the first consideration we had.
You could say, we've gone down this path, we've tried to make C-5 work. It won't work. We can make, you can make a motion today to resubmit the same recommendation that you did originally to the city commission, that the property be zoned to I-2, and that the city commission be willing to consider a plan change for the entire area south of State Street, west of Dry Creek.
I felt that was the right decision in the first place and was a more accurate rendering of the comprehensive plan, so...
Hey, that's not my motion, though. My motion was to reject PC-5 as presented and to revisit this entire area for appropriate zoning before we start down this road of spot zoning.
Did anybody second that motion?
It has to, because it has to be done anyway, before we can go any further.
I'll ask you for a second.
So, we have an application in front of you, which is application Z-13-5, and we have a motion for Mr. Kennedy to recommend denial of that application.
And to include with that, a study, whatever it takes, whatever it takes, to look at this area for developmental purposes, the comprehensive plan. That's part of it.
And Ken, would you accept as a friendly amendment to that motion, to this area as described by Mr. Andrews?
Yes, yes. Whatever he said, whatever terminology, I'll try it right now.
Right.
Revisit that on the comprehensive plan, yes.
And you're okay with that second and the friendly?
Yes, I am. And that, for the record, is the area south of State Street between Old Dry Creek Channel and the city limits.
That whole white area there.
City limits.
City limits or the levee, Dean?
City limits, which essentially is the other side of the channel.
Nobody gets us down there.
We're not quite sure anything's going to help solve the problem. I mean, again, you're, I would love to help you, you know what I mean? And I can know you've got the property and all that, but I just don't see any way for this commission to help you, other than you got caught in a piece of property that, it doesn't matter which way we go, so we're trying to backtrack and get it done right. And I think that's probably what the motion is on the table. So, I have a first and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye. I still don't think that this gets us anyplace. I think we would be a lot better off to go back to the initial, the original application to change the, to do the spot change to the comprehensive plan and zone it I-2, and then at least these two properties are appropriate to be zoned for what the present owners want to do.
I agree with the Abner, but at least this preserves the opportunity down the road to clarify the map.
Right.
All right. Motion passes six, one.
So, your two revised recommendations on this will be reported to the city commission, and we will clearly emphasize your desire that this area be revisited in its entirety as to its future land use designation.
You could even just take the north half, north half of that land.
Sounds good to me. What's next?
All right. Thank you.
Left them in limbo with the property that's...
Okay. I'm sure we'll see you soon. Mr. Wooster, thank you for your time.
See you somewhere. My man, I'm going to get coffins before this is over. I might be dead. Got any cheap coffins?
He's prohibited from drumming up business on commission time. He's prohibited from drumming up business on commission time, so...
October is the National Community Planning Month, and we just put at your places there a possible resolution that could go to the Salina City Commission, designating or taking note of October as National Community Planning Month. We just wanted to point out a couple things that are occurring. We time our landscaping awards to tie in with Community Planning Month. The state chapter of the Kansas Planning Association is having its annual meeting in Manhattan on Thursday and Friday, and I will be attending that. And Salina recently played host to the Kansas Historic Preservation Conference for the first time in a number of years, so those are activities associated with that. But if we get your support, we may ask that this be made a proclamation at the upcoming city commission meeting. We may ask Mr. Chairman to present this to the city commission, or it could be done by a staff member. But we just wanted to put this in front of you, because one of the items is it does call for public recognition of the participation and dedication of members of planning commissions and other citizen planners, and it recognizes the contributions made by professional community planners as well. But we do want to express our thanks for your continued attendance and patience as we work through a number of these planning issues.
Does that require formal...
Does not require any formal action, but if the city clerk views this acceptable, then we'll ask that this be presented to the city commission as well.
I would say we ought to do it, and I'm all in favor of Todd Welsh presenting it.
Yeah, he's second.
Any last comments before we adjourn?
Yes, I have one. I would like, I would request, whether this requires a motion or not, but I would request that the staff pass along somehow to the city that if that work is still going on next meeting, that no work be done until this meeting is over with. It's disrespectful to people who are trying to convey information. I can't hear periodically, and I think it's something we shouldn't put up with as a commission.
I hate to point out, but the city commission does not control this building. It's controlled by a separate commission called the Building Authority, and that they have led a contract with a time limit. And we are operating outside their time limit, and it's, your request is aimed at the wrong people.
The city commission is...
Well, I don't think it's... Well, we're asking staff to convey to the appropriate bodies, city, county, planning commission, a request that the work not be done during this commission. So, I think that's, wherever it's directed, that's where it needs to go.
Yes, the city commission suffers from the same inconvenience. Same thing happens at their meetings.
Yeah, because the contracts live. There's a deadline.
This meeting is adjourned.